And our online participants are just joining us now by Zoom, so we're going to give that a minute. Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the April meeting, the Board of Education. And welcome also to our first hybrid meeting. And so I want to extend a warm welcome to all of you who are joining us in person and also online. This may feel a little bit strange, and if you're feeling that, I don't think you're alone. But it's so good to be able to have the option to do this, and we will greatly appreciate your patience tonight as we navigate doing this in a new way with some new technology. So thank you very much for that in advance. As we begin our meeting, the Richmond Board of Education humbly acknowledges and thanks the first peoples of the Hunkamenum Language Group on whose traditional and unceded territories we teach, learn, and live. This evening, we're going to have some announcements to begin with, and I know trustees have a few announcements, so I'm just going to start over to my left with trustee sergeant.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Richmond School District recognizes Mental Health Week in Canada, taking place this year between May 2nd and May 8th. The goal of this week is to increase awareness and learn about tools and strategies available to support mental health and substance use challenges. During this week, a number of events and learning opportunities have been planned to raise awareness for students, parents, and staff. For example, on May 4th, the school district is pleased to offer an evening with national leaders in this field to engage parents in a dialogue around adolescent mental health and wellness. As well, a number of schools are having information tables set up during the lunch hour with district staff, representatives from Child and Youth Mental Health in the community, as well as members of the district Youth Mental Health Advisory to answer questions and provide information regarding available resources and access to support services enrichment. These activities, while supporting Mental Health Week, are in keeping with our board's strategic plan's goal to foster resilient and healthy lifelong learners and are part of an ongoing district-wide supports for all students and staff in supporting mental health. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee sergeant and trustee Larson.
Thank you. Good evening. April is Sikh Heritage Month in Canada. It was first officially recognized by the Government of Canada in 2019. Its purpose is to celebrate the contributions of all Sikh Canadians and develop a greater understanding and appreciation of a rich, unique, and diverse heritage of the Sikh faith and culture. This month, students of all appreciation of, pardon me, of all ages have been learning about the contributions of Sikh Canadians. Posters were sent to all schools which provide information on Sikh contributions and history. This April is also a month in which several of the faiths represented in our schools are observing religious celebrations. This past month, our schools have recognized Easter, Passover, and Ramadan in a variety of ways to ensure that our students learn and/or are represented represented in the different faiths and cultures that make up our schools. May is Asian Heritage Month, which is an opportunity for all of our staff and students to learn more about the many contributions of Canadians of Asian descent throughout our history. May is also Canadian Jewish Heritage Month, a time to celebrate the richness of Jewish culture, heritage, and history in Canada. In May, our schools will recognize Asian Heritage Month and Canadian Jewish Heritage Months in a variety of ways to ensure that all of our students learn about Asian and Jewish heritage and excellence. The board's strategic plan, Priority 2, Equity and Inclusion, outlines our commitment to ensure that all of our students, families, and staff feel welcomed, are treated respectfully, and have a sense of belonging. These many learning opportunities act to open doors to conversations in the commitment to ensuring the Richmond School District is a place of equity, inclusion, and is a safe and respectful place for all members of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Larson. Trustee Tuklony?
Yes, I'm going to announce the QP National Day of Mourning. As we announced at last month's public board meeting, tomorrow, April 28th, is the National Day of Mourning. This is a day that we take the time to pause to acknowledge workers killed or injured on the job. Flags are flown at half-mast, and ceremonies are held across the country and around the world, and also in our district at our at our works yard. While we honor those who have suffered as a result of workplace accidents, it is also time to renew our commitment to creating safer workplaces for all employees. Thank you.
You trustee Tuklony, trustee Goldstein.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight, we will be providing stakeholders and our community an opportunity to speak directly to trustees on their budget priorities while the district faces fiscal challenges in these trying times. We will be using a portion of tonight's board meeting for a budget committee of the whole. During the committee of the whole, we will receive presentations and briefs on the budget. If you have comments or questions, you can also email them to boardmeetings@sd38.bc.ca. I would also encourage you to visit our Budget Process webpage to access information on our budget as well as submit your budget feedback.
Thank you, trustee Goldstein. And a quick update on behalf of all trustees on the board. Trustees had the opportunity to attend the B.C. School Trustees Association this past weekend. Just wanted to briefly let you know about that, and the theme this year was moving from grief to medicine, moving forward with good hearts, and it was really a time where we we had the honor of being able to listen and learn from some of our indigenous elders as they told some their stories and also offered some cultural teachings. We heard from some younger indigenous speakers about truth reconciliation and decolonization and what they are hoping to see in terms of that being embedded in public education. That was a really powerful time. I know those of us who were there had a very powerful experience of that. And then on Saturday, we we took that mindset and those learnings with us into our business meeting. And there were a number of advocacy motions that were passed. Those will be available on the school trustee's website, B.C. School Trustee's website very soon, but some of those things were around funding, operating and capital funding, universal food programs, support for universal gender-inclusive washrooms, climate action, and again, support for outdoor learning spaces in our schools as well. And and again, a call to for further implementation of the TRC calls to action. So just a few of the issues that trustees were discussing and taking action on this weekend. And I believe our secretary treasurer, Ms. Wang, has some notice about how our meeting is going to flow tonight.
Thank you, chairperson. Yes, there will be some protocols for today's meeting. We will have two question periods during this meeting. During the question period, we will first have the online attendees asking their questions by raising, using the raise hand icon in Zoom to ask questions. We'll then move to the meeting attendees on the floor. If you have any questions, please raise your hand. And you'll be called by the chairperson, and once you're called, please come to the speaker's table, introduce yourself, and ask your questions. And after the attendees on the floor will then read the questions from from our board meeting email account. So for the public who's joining this meeting online, if you haven't submitted your questions, please feel free to do so to boardmeetings@sd38.bc.ca. So we will we'll also ask, read questions from, answer questions that we receive from the Q and A feature in the Zoom webinar. So also for the public joining us through online, through Zoom today, you will be able to watch and listen to the meeting, but you will not be able to speak or chat during the meeting. After the meeting, we'll be posting the recording of this meeting and make it publicly publicly available. So that's my announcement back to you, chairperson.
Very much, Ms. Wang. And can I just ask you if there are any materials not included in the packages available to the public tonight?
Yes, so we did receive a budget brief from RTA this morning. We just haven't had the time to post it on the website. We did, however, printed the budget brief and made it available at the desk in the boardroom. So we'll be posting the budget brief tomorrow on the district's website. Other than that, all other materials are available on the website, and they're they're available to the public.
Thank you. Great, thank you very much. So we're going to move to item two, which is adoption of our agenda for our meeting. Looking for someone to move adoption, trustee Goldstein, thank you, seconded trustee Larson. If you're not seeing hands, hands physically, it's because we've also asked trustees to use the raise hand function in Zoom so that we can see it all one place. We have two trustees joining us on Zoom tonight. So that's been moved and seconded. All in favor? That's Carrie. Thank you very much. So we'll move into our agenda. We do not have any presentations or special recognitions or or other briefs this evening. Budget briefs will be presented during the Committee of the Whole. So we're at our first period of time where we can take questions from the public and just want to suggest that if you have a question regarding the budget, you might want to hold that and wait until the Committee of the Whole. Our treasurer, Ms. Wang, secretary treasurer, Ms. Wang, will be presenting on the budget and may have the information that answers your question. But also the Committee of the Whole is a time to ask questions. There's also a second question period later in our agenda. So budget questions, we'd appreciate if you could hold until then. If there are any other questions, I'm going to check about our online participants, whether there are any questions.
Not at this time, chairperson.
Okay, thank you. And any questions? You're in person. I think that we will skip the communications break for now, save it in case there are any technical difficulties we might need it for. And we'll move to item four, which is report from our executive team superintendent.
Thank you, chairperson. A number of items we'd like to report on this evening, starting with a brief report on our district and how it's been supporting folks from Ukraine. Very pleased to report that we've had welcoming 15 students and their families from Ukraine over the last couple of weeks. I really want to thank our welcome center staff, including our settlement workers who've been working very hard to settle the the students and their families into our schools, and certainly also want to give thanks to the folks in the schools where the students have been placed. And and we know that these families have certainly been experiencing horrible times and anything that our community and schools can do to support them. Of course, we want to do that. At this time, I'd like to pass things over to our deputy superintendent, Mr. Ryan, to provide an update on secondary scheduling for 2022-23.
Thank you, Superintendent Robinson. So as a follow-up to the information provided at the March Public Board Meeting regarding secondary organizational structures for the 2022-23 school year, I'm sharing an update on the work that our 10 secondary schools are engaged in over the past month. So a few reminders back to our time in March. So the district conducted several surveys at the secondary level prior to spring break. Approximately 6,500 students, parents, and staff participated from our 10 secondary schools. The purpose of the survey was to gather feedback, perspectives, preferences, and relationship to various organizational structures that have been implemented over the course of the pandemic, and a district executive summary of survey results has been posted on the district webpage for over two weeks. For the past month, secondary school staff have been reviewing survey results and following processes collaboratively developed by the district and RTA as they consider various options such as linear semester quarter schedules and personalized learning time, et cetera. I'm pleased to report that school staff are engaged in vigorous discussions about organizational structures with a focus on student and parent input in alignment with the board's commitment articulated in the strategic plan, Priority 5, a connected learning community. Principals are working with staff at the school level and in consultation with the assistant superintendents and deputy superintendent at the district level to support consistency in decision-making processes. These are complex processes, and school staff are operating under very short timelines. Our 10 secondary schools are in various stages of this complex journey, and I'm confident that all schools will have approved organizational structures to share with their communities by no later than the end of next week. So I want to convey my deep appreciation to our school administrative teams for their courageous leadership through these processes. The district has offered up a complex leadership challenge, and school staff have been guided by student voice and parent input always with a view to what is best in support of student learning with much appreciation for all involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Superintendent Ryan. Just before I move on, are there any questions from trustees on that particular item? Okay, thank you. Moving forward, I'd like to invite Executive Director McMillan, who is going to provide an update on Education Week.
Good evening, everyone. This week marks Education Week in Richmond, a chance to share and celebrate the individual classroom and school learning opportunities that are happening in our Richmond schools. This year's overarching theme is connection, which highlights the importance of connection as a district community and the important connection that school has been for students and families during the pandemic. As with last year, we're utilizing a virtual format where families and community members can go to our district website to see all of the learning highlighted over the course of the week. Each day focuses on a particular theme which began on Monday with connecting to place, then diversity, equity, and inclusion on Tuesday. Today's theme is exploring healthy living and well-being, then learning together, and we'll be closing the week on Friday with sharing our gifts. Students, classrooms, and schools have submitted photos, videos, and other highlights, providing a window into learning and the experiences of our students across the district. Within each day, you'll also find a highlighted community connection, which includes information and links to opportunities in the broader Richmond community. We encourage all members of our Richmond community and staff to take the time to enjoy the examples of the work that has been provided by staff and students by visiting our district website at www.st38.bc.ca. We're excited to highlight Richmond as a learning community, reflecting the key goals in the board's strategic plan around Priority 1, Inspired Learners, Priority 2, Equity and Inclusion, and Priority 5, a Connected Learning Community, as we celebrate Education Week in Richmond. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Executive Director McMillan, and I get the fun part always of sharing some of the amazing, very small number of the amazing things that are happening around the school district. So what I'm going to do is, thank you, Executive Director Lang, for posting that. That's perfect. I shared just a number of things that are happening around the district, starting with designing and building at Bing Elementary. So recently, students at Bing explored collaboration and creativity through building shelters out of PVC pipe. In order to be successful, students had to consider the connections they needed, the length of individual pipes, and how they might construct something that groups could actually sit in. And you can see from the images there, they were they were successful. Just a small example of something great happening in a school. Salmon Inquiry, students at Grauer Elementary have been engaging in a science inquiry on the various creatures that live at different depths of the ocean. They learned about ocean environments that have a lot of light, some that have complete darkness. And then they made their very own creatures that could thrive in either of those environments. They also created salmon mobiles with facts they had gathered, and then they hung their mobiles from the class tree. Next, we have student voice. This spring, students from Camby, MacNeil, and Spallockwicks have engaged in a series of sessions about identity, belonging, diversity, equity, and inclusion. More importantly, students have been invited to share their lived experiences, perspectives, and insights about what belonging means to them. Through listening and learning, students have been able to identify actions that can be taken to create a greater sense of belonging for everyone in their school. At the beginning of the school year, a student from McKinney Elementary explained to her classmates what it means to have a visual impairment, what her unique experience was, and how she was able to use an array of tools to learn alongside her classmates. By leading the presentation, the student proved herself to be an excellent advocate, as well as showing her classmates that she is secure in her identity and confident in her abilities using alternate tools to access learning in her classroom. The Beck Elementary has been working on building community through their weekly assemblies and school-wide activities. The school's intermediate students had their first in-person assembly after spring break, and during the assembly, the school's librarian also read a book that was connected with their weekly theme. School assemblies are a great way for students to connect and to learn together about how to care for each other, their school, and for their community. Grade three students from Curry Elementary have been engaging in an inquiry about how stories help us learn about ourselves, our families, and our communities. Students shared their own family stories, both orally and in writing, and connections to the core competencies were made throughout the inquiry with student reflections being documented. And I'm going to butcher my French accent here, and I'll apologize ahead of time. Concours d'Art or Trois, French public speaking competition. Concours is Canada's largest French public speaking competition. The competition is open to students in every province and territory in a wide range of age group categories and French abilities. Thousands of students participate every year in communities big and small for their opportunity to win prizes and scholarships to post secondary institutions. This year, students from Home Elementary and Whiteside have submitted videos for district judging, and these videos can be viewed on the district website. Winners for each grading category will be selected and announced by April the 22nd, so that has actually passed, so I'm assuming that's happened. And finally, Jazz Night 2022. This year, Education Week proudly features Jazz Night as part of music in our schools, featuring eight Richmond Secondary School music programs. The Richmond School District has vibrant and thriving music opportunities, including choir, musical theater, instrumental, concert band, and jazz band programs. In addition to the vast knowledge and skills that it takes to become a musician, music education helps our learners become persistent, confident, and expressive individuals. Participating in an ensemble allows for lasting friendships and a sense of belonging that it's essential to the overall wellness for impacting all aspects of our learners' lives. The full Jazz Night performance can be viewed on the district website. For now, please enjoy this performance of "On the Sunny Side of the Street" from Hugh Boyd's Secondary Jazz Band.
This is the Hugh Boyd Jazz Band, playing "On the Sunny Side of the Street" by Jimmy McHugh, arranged by John Berry, with solos by Victor Lynn.
So, Chairperson, just before I conclude, I would certainly encourage everybody to visit our website and see. This was just a small sampling of the amazing things happening in classrooms across our school district, and please do check out all the things that are happening for Education Week. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Superintendent, and to our senior team who've reported in. And of course, that's, as usual, the most inspiring part of our meeting, where we get to see concretely why we're here, who we serve, and as our superintendent said, Education Week, lots of amazing stories online on the website, or just go to Twitter and see what our schools are posting about everything that's happening. And actually, trustees were treated to the full jazz performance, all the bands, on Monday evening when we met in person with with leaders, leadership students in the district. So I encourage you to watch all the music put on in the background and have a lovely evening. So before I get too far off script here, let's go to our next item on the agenda, approval of minutes. There are minutes in our agenda package of a regular meeting of the board held Wednesday, March 30th, for approval. And I see trustee sergeant, are you moving adoption of those? Great, thank you. And a secondary? Trustee Larson, thank you very much. Any discussion? I'm going to call the question. Those in favor? Any opposed? That's Carrie. Thank you very much. Also included in the agenda package is a record of an in-camera meeting of the board held also Wednesday, March 30th, 2022. And we're on to business arising, and we are at our first item, 6A. And this is found on page 19 of the agenda package, is the 2022-2023 annual budget. I get to do this motion, right? Yes. Okay. So there is a recommendation here in the agenda that the Board of Education, Richmond, move into a committee of the whole to allow for all members of the public in attendance to have the opportunity to participate in the discussion on the 2022-2023 operating budget, and that the superintendent facilitate the discussion. Mover, please. Trustee Larson, thanks. Trustee Sergeant, I know it's faster. Any discussion? Then I'll just call that question. All those in favor? Looking around, looking on Zoom. Thank you very much. That's carried. Turn things over to you, Superintendent.
Thank you, Chairperson. I'm going to begin by asking our secretary treasurer to please speak to her budget report that is in the package.
Thank you, Superintendent Robinson. I will ask. Thank you, Rob. So in this presentation, I'll provide some highlights of the 2022-23 budget process that's currently underway. So the next slide, we have staff have completed a three-year base budget for the upcoming 2022-23 school year and also the following two years, 23, 24, 24, 25. So the base budget reflects projected student enrollment, operating revenues from the Ministry of Education, and other revenues such as rental revenues and also international tuition revenues. Also, the budget includes all the projected expenditures for the district. So these estimates are done based on the public sector accounting standards, and it's also based on following the government's financial reporting requirement. and is also based on following the government's financial reporting requirements. So in this table, for the 2022-23 school year, you can see Richmond School District is facing a structural budget shortfall, or sometime we call it operating deficit of $3.9 million. So $3.9 million, that's roughly 1.8% of the district's total operating budget. So we say it's structural, and that's because this is an ongoing budget shortfall. It's not a one-time. If we don't if we don't deal with this budget shortfall, it's going to continue. And that's why we see a smaller projected shortfall of $3.3 million for each of the next two years. So that's the overall situation of our base budget. Moving on to the next slide, so we are talking about a structural shortfall, operating deficit. By government's legislation, as a school district, we have to balance the budget. So the question is, how do we balance the budget? As a school district, we have to follow a set of guiding principles throughout this budget process. These guiding principles, they were developed by the board in collaboration with the Budget Advisory Working Group, including our stakeholders' representatives. So the first guiding principle is to, we have to make sure we align the budget with the board's strategic plan and priorities, and also the board's commitment to a responsible long-term fiscal plan process. The second guiding principle is the budget is a transparent and inclusive engagement process. It involves all stakeholder groups. For example, today, we have our stakeholders and also our public participating in the budget discussion. The third guiding principle is that we want to focus on, we have to focus on maximizing learning opportunities for students, and that's what we do here. The fourth principle is we need to support innovation and be responsive to system changes. But at the same time, we have to maintain efficiency and long-term sustainability. We also want to make sure that our systems are based on best practices in the industry, and it's based on effectiveness, efficiency throughout the system. Finally, the budget decisions, we have to base the budget decisions on accurate and relevant data and information. That's why in the previous slide, I mentioned that the estimates that we're doing here, the data analysis is following the Canadian public sector accounting standards. So the next slide, when it comes to the specific budget adjustments or strategies, we want to focus on following these guiding principles and also the board's priorities. We want to consider input and feedback from our stakeholders and our broader community. We also want to weigh pros and cons of the budget options by looking at short-term and long-term impacts. Wherever possible, we need to minimize the impact on our classrooms. We also want to balance the staffing adjustments across different employee groups, wherever it's feasible. Sometimes we do need to leverage on our reserves to make sure we can soften the impact, you know, whenever it's feasible to do so. We have to be mindful that the government requirement and also the board policy, we need to follow these requirements. We have to maintain certain level of reserves to deal with some emerging costs and unforeseen expenditures. I think everybody understands in the past two years, it's proved that these emerging costs, they do exist, and they do come up, whether it's COVID responses or unexpected increases in inflation. So the goal here for the district is we want to achieve a long-term fiscal sustainability to make sure that we can deal with and we can achieve our priorities and goals we have in our strategic plan. Well, moving to the next slide, these are some facts that we're working with in this budget process. You know, we are dealing with a $3.9 million structural budget shortfall. That's about 1.8% of the total operating budget. And we do have limited capacity to increase revenues because we are relying on the Ministry of Education. 92% of our total revenue comes from the ministry's operating grant. And we know for the next school year, 2022-23, there has been no grant rate increases to address inflationary cost pressures. So 92% of our total operating budget is tied to staffing cost, and that's in salaries and benefits. We know annual inflationary cost factors right now in Canada is running at about 6%. That's an annual inflation factor. And from that, the cost pressures for the district is about $1 million. So it's difficult to balance the budget without doing any staffing adjustments. So we know according to the legislation, school districts in B.C., we have to balance the budget. That means we have to live within our revenues. Following the government's requirement, the board policy has a target to maintain a reserve level in the range of 2% to 4% of our annual operating budget. That's about 4% to 8% million dollars of our total reserves. So by the end of this year, the estimated or projected surplus for our district is about $7.5 million. So that's really a rainy day fund, and they are there to be available for us to cover any emerging costs on a one-time basis. So that's the facts that we're working with through this budget process. And on to the next slide. Facing the budget shortfall, the district's management team has done a lot of work, along with the finance department, to find savings, to find efficiencies in every department to address the budget shortfall. First, we reviewed the previous year's carry-forward amount, or, you know, these are the previous year's surplus amounts that are still sitting on the department's accounts. So by reviewing about more than 500 lines of GL accounts, we were able to identify approximately $1 million that we can pull back from the department and put them in the board's reserves balance. So by doing this, we're able to increase the available reserve level by about half percent. So if the board decides to use reserves to balance the budget and soften the impact to the system, we have a little bit more resource to go to. Secondly, we did a deeper dive in every department and also school supplies and services with a focus to find efficiencies and savings in the system. So we spent hours and reviewed thousands of GL accounts. We were able to find close to $1 million in savings in supplies and services. We also reviewed detailed program expenditure information, and we wanted to make sure that our two revenue generating departments, international education and also continuing education, they are on a cost-neutral position. So that's done through looking at program efficiencies and also increasing tuition revenues. So the purpose of the first one, two, three, three steps is that really we wanted to find the savings to keep the staffing reductions to a minimal level. After these steps, the current supplies and services budgets, they're very prescriptive, meaning there's very little room for us to go further, to do further reductions without affecting the operations and classrooms. So unfortunately, at this point, as you know, 92% of the budget is in staffing. So without additional revenue from the government, without additional revenue from other sources, the staffing adjustments are, at this point, is unavoidable in order for the board to balance the budget. So those are the steps that we have taken through the process. So next slide is a detailed list of proposed budget adjustments for the 2022-23 school year for the board to consider. And this list includes supplies and services and also some staffing adjustments. So this table is actually presented in the board meeting package on page 21. I just wanted to note here that all positions that are being proposed within the district, they are important positions. None of the positions are not important. But when we, as an organization, when we are dealing with finite resources, we are required by law to balance the budget. So some difficult decisions have to be made. Also, staff are providing thoughtful proposals. We understand there will be impact to the system. However, we do have plans in place to mitigate the impacts on the system, and we're keeping the adjustments as far away as possible from the classrooms. Every budget adjustment is a hard decision to make. And staff, we're doing our best to gather as much feedback and the information as possible to provide to the board so that they can make informed decisions. Also, just on this slide, I just want to clarify one point, based on the previous question raised by our QP executive members. So the day custodian positions in 21-22, they were one-time increase in the 21-22 budget for a 10 FTE or 20 headcount, 10 FT from September to March, and also another 2.7 FTEs from March to June. So the nature of those positions, they were temporary, and the term will be completed by the end of June. So the decision at the time in 21-22 is to have these positions completed by the end of June. So therefore, these positions are not related to 22-23. That's why those positions are not included in the reduction list in 22-23 budget table. So I hope that clarifies some of the questions. Also, the data here are processed or treated consistently across different employee groups and then across different budget years. So moving on to the next slide. This slide is a summary of the proposed adjustments by employee groups for 2022-23. So just a quick reminder that RTA is 3, 3.0, QP 15, Management 2.3, and the total supplies and services and also substitute cost is about $906,000. So the total adjustments proposed here is $2.56 million. A quick reminder, last year, the RTA reduction was higher. So the next slide is, I think it's also important to look at not only the total FT adjustments, but also the percentage of the adjustments relative to the total FTEs by employee group. So as noted in this table, the percentage adjustment, the potential percentage of the net adjustment for management is 1.6%. RTA is 0.3%, and QP is at 1.7%. So just a quick note here, some of the adjustments are done through moving FT positions from the operating fund to special purpose funds, for example, capital funds. Some other positions are done through retirement or attrition because of the budget constraint, which is decided not to backfill those positions. And other positions will be adjusted through the layoff process. So the next slide is showing the overall financial impact at the district level based on the proposed budget adjustments. By reducing $2.56 million ongoing operating expenses, we will be able to, we will have to use $1.36 million of reserves to balance the budget, and that usage of the reserves is on a one-time basis. So that means next year this time, we're likely to come back to look at the 1.36 million shortfall again. We understand, you know, because of the one-time adjustment, we're using one-time resources. So we're basically deferring the remainder of the budget shortfall to the next year. So this next slide, we're just summarizing the benefits of the proposed approach here is really since the start of the pandemic in 2020, the district has been facing a new, a different, and a new physical reality. It is only prudent for the district and the board to align our operations to the new physical reality. By adjusting our operating budget, we are aligning the operations with this new physical reality. And we recognize that taking the budget reductions in one year will have more significant impact on the system. So we are looking at leveraging the reserve balances so we can soften the impact on the system. We are taking a thoughtful approach. So by using the reserves, we allow the district to have more time to plan and adjust if the budget situation changes or recovers over the next year. So that's really the pros and cons of this approach. On to the next slide, just to quickly overview the budget timeline, is that the target is the board will approve the budget by the end of May, so we can consider any potential adjustment in the system on a timely fashion. So the last slide of this presentation is, I just want to quickly go over the budget process. We want to make sure the process is transparent and inclusive. We welcome stakeholder feedback and input as well as the public participation. If you have any questions or comments, please feel free to send it to the budget feedback email. And thank you for your participation in today's meeting. So that's my presentation. Back to you, Superintendent.
Thank you very much, Secretary Treasurer. So the Committee of the Whole is an opportunity for partner group representatives and members of the public to present to trustees on the proposed budget. Trustees will consider all feedback and input that is provided before any decisions are made regarding the budget at the public meeting at the end of May. If there are any attendees from the public who are here in the boardroom this evening who have not signed up in advance and would like to make a statement regarding the budget, we ask that you please sign up with our Director of Communications, David Sadler. He's at the back here, and you will be added to the speakers list. Alternatively, for anyone viewing the meeting virtually, or if you are present, but you prefer not to speak this evening, you are invited to send in your comments via email to the board's budget email address, which has been mentioned a couple times. That's st38budgetfeedback@st38.vc.ca. A reminder that all speakers other than the stakeholder presidents are asked to keep your statements to a maximum of three minutes. Speakers will be given an audible warning after two minutes and are asked to conclude their comments on or before, or at or before the three-minute mark in order to allow others to share their thoughts during the meeting. And again, that three-minute mark does not apply to the three stakeholder presidents who are here this evening. So with that being said, we're going to begin our discussion this evening. I'm going to invite Liz Baberstock, President of the Richmond Teachers Association, to come up and share your thoughts. Thank you.
Good evening. It's an odd perspective, because I can see myself forward and backwards at the same time. So Liz Baberstock, President, Richmond Teachers Association, and I thank you on behalf of the RTA for the opportunity. And I thank you on behalf of the RTA for the opportunity to present our brief. And I start by reflecting and appreciating the transparency and the ability to ask questions throughout this process. And there is a distinct openness to continue those questions all the way up to the last minute. So that is very much appreciated. I'm not going to read my latest brief. It's number three. And I, I thought about it in terms of what's my theme. And I started out with math. The math is simple. But that doesn't really work because math is never simple. And then I went to, well, it's actually follow the numbers. So that's my theme is actually follow the numbers. There can't be any more cuts to people. And that really is the, the simplest statement in my message. And I know that that's an impossible message. But it is one I truly do believe in. And so you will see in here when I look at it from follow the numbers is my first recommendation is that, well, ideally, the board has successful advocacy in the very near future. But if not, is actually to delay passing the budget and focus on strong advocacy. And I look at this as it's all of our duties. We are all here together. But you are the guardians to public education in Richmond. And the numbers that I have put in this brief, they're compelling. And I believe they would be supported by the community of Richmond. We need a provincial budget adjustment to reflect rising costs. Currently, inflation is running over six percent. We also need recognition from the province that initiatives and ideas must be funded or they come at an at a cost and that cost is people. Progress is not sustainable without additional funding. The province has not recognized that their own funding formula has created additional challenges for districts in the lower mainland. As part of their assumptions are predicated on the number of international students arriving and the revenue that it generates for the lower mainland. This is actually down a significant amount anywhere now from twenty five to thirty percent or more from where it was. This money has been supplementing lower mainland budgets, including Richmond in this province. And the province has not recognized this or supported the gap in the funding formula that has been generated from the pandemic. The RTA has recognized in our brief two reasonable scenarios to show the difference. A two percent adjustment well below if inflation would make and what a four point three percent adjustment would make. The adjustments, that is an adjustment equivalent to what was made last year. I've got big paper for a big task. I like chart paper. So you can see in this that when you look at the numbers, if there was a two percent adjustment from the provincial government, that essentially this would remove the structural shortfall. Four point three percent and that would place the board in a position of supporting enhancements, which the RTA has requested in our previous briefs this year and last year and the year before. We do this every year to ensure trustees remember that there is chronic underfunding. And it continues to leave gaps in the system or areas that we would like to see enhanced. I note this advocacy request does actually align completely with the motion that was passed by the B C School Trustees on the weekend by an overwhelming ninety nine point five percent. And I have included that motion as Chair Nixon spoke to this evening. So I do implore you to do this work immediately and to make it public. These cuts should not happen and it is imperative that you highlight the continued failure to fund public education in Richmond. You need to do this work with other boards and make this an issue for government. I suggest that every stakeholder in this room or on the screen will stand with you in support. But this is strong leadership that we're asking you to take. The RTA has done their work. We have written to the minister. We have included MLAs. We spoke directly to the minister recently. And MLAs, in fact, in Richmond have reached out directly to the RTA and we have organized a meeting in the very near future. So the RTA is doing what we can on this issue. If you're not willing to take this avenue, and I honestly can't understand why, and we will continue to ask. Option two sees a budget passed in May with no cuts to people. Rather, we suggest cutting services and supplies, though not ideal. We do this with the recognition that growth has happened in Richmond this year. It's been occurring at some unexpected rates. And in fact, we have many schools right now where classes are now over class size limits. And this is due to midyear enrollment. Now I realize that enrollment means increasing costs because you will need additional staffing. But growth is always positive and does yield neck net increases beyond what is needed for staffing. So again, all of this is still insufficient because of the fact that there are no inflation adjustments. The RTA is vehemently opposed against cuts. And my brief specifically addresses cuts to RTA positions. These proposed cuts in the brief, they will directly impact kids, though Richmond may have better staffing ratios with respect to school psychologists and S L Ps than other districts. This is really a false narrative. We cannot justify lowering supports for kids because others provide less. Worry, I'm closing in. With a four point, sorry. With a four point three percent adjustment that we would like to see from the provincial government, we would actually be coming to you tonight asking for an increase to the number of school psychologists and S L Ps and other RTA positions. The workload that is currently on our members is greater than ever and they cannot work harder. So a cut is simply less support, less support in schools and more work for RTA members and others. Finally, if this is not compelling, I will address some of the cuts that I do believe should be reconsidered. As I've indicated, I do believe all RTA positions should be maintained and they are part of my brief. But when I look at this list, I also note that the school career information advisors, they should be maintained. The world that our students are in is becoming ever more complex. And the advisors in schools are essential supports for kids as they navigate next steps in their future. District level positions will not provide that necessary connection and trust that is vital for students. I also request that you do not cut library technicians at secondary schools. This does need to be maintained. And the RTA would argue that it should actually be increased to provide some additional support to elementary schools, some of which we are now funding are bigger than some of our secondary schools. These cuts will directly impact students' access to resources and access to libraries. Libraries may need to be closed during the school day to ensure that everybody gets their breaks, can eat lunch, get their preparation time. And I think it's important for trustees to remember the role of the library. And for many students, the library is a refuge. It is a place to connect with others over resources. It is a place students make new and different connections. A library, the staff and the access points are so important to social emotional health of students. I also request that you maintain the educational assistant literacy support. Literacy and numeracy are key strategic goals for the board. Cutting this position doesn't align with these goals. And really, all of the cuts that are directly in schools, I do think that they should be limited. And again, no cuts to people. And with that, I express my thanks for this opportunity. And I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Baberstock, for, for providing your thoughts for the trustee's consideration. At this time, I'll open it up to trustees to see whether you've got any questions for clarification. Trustee Sergeant, I see your hand up.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you, Ms. Baberstock. I think you know this board takes advocacy very seriously. And unfortunately, I've been making cuts most of my almost twenty years. And throughout the twenty years have been advocated in every avenue possible. We will continue to do that. The weekend at our B C S T A conference, you will have noted the number of motions that were supported in very big way. And the one you quoted as well. So we are working with every district, sixty districts across the province. And as a B C S T A board member passed. But I can say we on the weekend spoke with the minister, the minister is well aware, especially around the five sick day announcement with no funding. We will further down in the agenda, there, there is an item called advocacy. I will be noting that a letter should be written in regards to the unfunded five day sick day. So I just wanted to let the, the community know that we worked very hard and take our advocacy role very seriously. I appreciate your brief. I appreciate you being on the BOG Budget Advisory Working Group to help us all work through this. I guess I have a question around, you've noted reasoning for the delay. And I'm still a little confused by that. So I'm just wondering if staff could just reflect on what would the delay do to our budget and process?
I asked the Secretary Treasurer to comment on that, please.
Sure. Thank you, Superintendent Robinson. So Liz, first of all, thank you so much for your brief and for your information, the information you provided. So I just wanted to make a comment about deferring the budget to June. I think there are more things, more disadvantages than advantages to delay it until June. Number one is really thank you for the, the recommendation on the advocacy items. However, there is no guarantee that the government will provide any additional funding. The budget twenty twenty two has been concluded. So likely we'll be waiting for another year for the budget twenty three to have any budget announcement. If there is any COVID recovery funding, it's probably unlikely to be anything sizable to cover our shortfall. So that's number one comment. Also, you know, the amended budget in the fall, that's really a process that we take as a school district across the B C school districts using the amended budget process to work with the new information that we receive, whether be in the enrollment increase. And also the government funding announcement or new funding or, you know, more funding. So that would be the, really the process that we should use to, to do a deeper dive on our budget situation. Number three, H R currently is working on staffing. As you know, so if there is any adjustments that has to be done because really it's not fair for staff to go through the summer without knowing what's going to happen, right? It's reasonable and is prudent for, for, for the organizations to provide the information to our staff. And the last comment is let's say the budget situation doesn't improve in, in September, in the fall. Then we'll, we'll be end up with, ending up with a worse situation if that happens. So we'll have to make double the cuts. For example, right now, we're saying, okay, we're reducing, adjusting one position. But in the fall, because we're, we have run out of time, in the fall, we could potentially looking at reducing two positions to, to just to make up the, the amount of funding that's needed. So if that happens, the impact on the system is going to be really devastating. So, you know, based on these rationale, I would say deferring to June probably not the best idea at this time. So that's my comment. Back to you, Superintendent.
Thank you. Trustee Sergeant, did you have any further comments or questions? Thank you. Trustee Tabalani.
Yes, well, I did appreciate your brief. I found it very interesting. And the numbers were interesting too. Although, you know, really banking on the ministry coming through, I, you know, trustees are always advocating and advocating, I would say regularly and heavily, but I haven't seen them ever award anything like this. We've been struggling to get our seismic renovations done. And, you know, we have to, I would say, fight for every penny that we get. It has been better lately. You know, we've moved ahead with a lot of our facilities, projects and things like that, and very appreciative of that. But you know, I would be, I would be really cautious about moving ahead with this scenario, although I would love to. I just did have though a question for our Secretary Treasurer. And, and I also wanted to point out one of the comments from the Secretary of Treasury, which was our inflation. Is our inflation amount is about one million and that's going up all the time. And so the longer we hesitate and pull back and, and you know, don't move ahead, it's going up. While we're doing that. So, but I did have a question on. So in your scenario, let me find it. There was the proposed option, which ours proposed option was just two point seven, no, everybody asking, oh, the two point seven and your proposal leaves us with a fund balance at two point one percent. So, you know, what, what does that difference mean? It doesn't look like a big difference, but can you explain, you know, that, that, how that would affect us in the coming year?
Oh, thank you, Trustee Tabalani, for your question. Yes. It, this is, it's, so our board policy says we should maintain, we should a target to maintain a reserve level that's between two to four percent. And that means it's about, you know, anywhere between four million to eight million. But if you talk to a financial manager, a prudent financial manager probably will say, you know, the best thing for the board to do is to maintain a level that's around three percent. So that you have enough buffer to deal with the emerging costs, you know, the unforeseen situations. Really for a district like our size, four million doesn't go very far, you know. We're talking about the inflationary cost pressure right now is sitting at one million dollars. But if you talk to any suppliers in the country across the province, you're going to hear higher prices by the month. You know, every month goes by, you're hearing the price is going up, right, by what, whatever percentage. So I would say there are a lot of things that's happened in the past two years. Number one, we're not out of COVID yet. You know, as much as we hope we're out of COVID, but we're not. So a lot of potential costs could come. Just the one thing that we recently had to deal with is the mobile, the portable hand washing stations. We thought by this time the COVID would be over and we were going to send the hand washing stations back to the suppliers. But guess what? We're going to keep them. So that's one additional cost that we're, we didn't even have them in the base budget. And now we have to find additional sixty thousand dollars to cover that cost. So this type of costs, they keep creeping up. Another example is sick time. Again, COVID is not out. So sick time could ramping up in the fall. And the E S A changes, we haven't received any funding for, for, for that. Utilities could potentially go up. So that's why I'm saying really the four million dollars is, is a bare minimum. It doesn't really go too far in a large district like us. Especially in the metro area. And, and the other thing I wanted to, a, a note I wanted to make here is our finance staff, they are very ethical people and they, they have high ethical standards. So when they create the budget scenarios and when they do the budget estimates, those, that's based on a lot of hours of work going into those numbers. So when we present the scenarios here and the data here, that the background behind the scenes is a lot of hours of work goes in there. We are doing the work. We are doing the work based on the accounting standard, the public sector accounting standards also is based on government reporting requirements. So. You know, based on that, we wish we're not in the position that we're in today. However, without additional government funding. Without international education back to the, coming back to the pre pandemic, we have recovered a lot. On the international education department. Before the pandemic, we had eight hundred fifty students and right now we're sitting at about seven hundred twenty, seven hundred thirty. So that's a huge improvement compared to twenty twenty, but it's still below the pre pandemic level. So without the additional revenues, it's just, we're, we're very unfortunate that we found ourselves in this position. So yeah, back to your question, I would say three percent is a safe buffer for the board to work with.
Trustee Nixon, let's hear Hannah.
Thank you, it's actually a question related to the information you were providing, Secretary Treasurer. Just want to double check, so one of the, if I'm understanding you correctly, one of the. Cost pressures that we are currently not factoring into the budget, which we may then need to. Have contingency or reserve to, to cover, it's a bit unknown right now. Is the, the, the cost impact of the unfunded. Five sick days legislation, which is put in not funded by the, by the province and it's, it's really hard at this point. I think we've, we've heard that to know. What to budget for that at this point, but as you say, to be prudent, we'd need to ensure we are able to, to cover kind of the. Worst case scenario for that in the fall.
Correct.
Yes.
Any other trustee questions? Okay, Ms. Baberstock, thank you very much for your brief, very much appreciated.
Thank you, and these are ideas, these are the numbers that matter to the government, so thank you.
Thank you. This time I'm going to invite Ian Hillman, President of Q P Local seven one six. To turn your camera on and your microphone and go ahead and present, please.
I can't turn the camera on, somebody has to go for me, okay, there we go. Evening, everyone, my name is Ian Hillman, President, Canadian Union of Public Employees Local seven one six, just to let you know. When I'm finished, please don't cut me off, there's three of us are going to be presenting our brief tonight. So I, I'm here to express my utter disappointment with the proposed cuts to both Q P and R T A staff once again. Not only are teaching and support staff jaws being cut, but to my astonishment. You're adding a new manager position. How when the district is in a deficit. It is adding to the deficit by adding another manager position. Fiscal responsibility demands no increases in staffing when jobs are being cut. For anyone who's read the, the B A W G report. There's a terrible discrepancy in it. On page twenty five, it shows in twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. That there were three point oh F T E positions cut in Q P. This is incorrect, as there were twelve positions cut. If you look at page twenty four of the Bog Report, you can see quite queer, quite clearly. There were twelve positions that were cut, not three. So let's be clear, that's twelve positions last year. And fifteen this year. These cuts will affect the classroom. Your, your proposal of the budget, how it's supposed to be rolled out to minimize the cuts to the classroom. Library technicians who work with students in the classroom, career information advisors that support students in their path to post-secondary. Children are in the classroom, they're in the schools. Continuing education. This department bled almost half a million dollars. And is forecast to lose another half a million dollars this year. But the only solution that this budget. Has for this half million dollar deficit again this year. Is to now replace the current director. This only reduces the deficit from four hundred and fifty thousand to two hundred and thirty thousand. How can the board not be looking at doing more to reduce this deficit from continuing education? And why is the board so paranoid about a rainy day? And not use more of the reserve funds? Here we are again, losing Q P jobs. Your staff morale is low already. This will only increase the morale. My members are in the classroom. But you're still cutting them. Managers at the board office, the works yard and information technology are not in the classroom. Do the trustees know what these cupid positions bring to the well being, learning and growth of the district students? These cuts are shameful. And I'm going to pass it over now to Stacy and then Nancy, thank you, and I'll be here for any questions.
Good evening, Stacy Robinson, First Vice President of Q P. I'm just here to talk a bit about the library texts. I'm just curious to know, I have two questions. Whether or not any of the trustees have actually gone to the sites to, to spend some time. With the library texts to see exactly what they do and to view and experience what their involvement is with the students. I'd like to know how many of the trustees have done that. Also, I would like to know, you know, in your budget for guiding principles, one of the things that you have stated is. All budget decisions will be focused on creating and maintaining educational programs and services for students. Which maximize opportunities for learning. Well, cutting these library tech positions doesn't maximize the opportunity for learning. And my other question would be where, who is going to be picking up the slack? Once these library texts have been cut, is that going to be offshooted to the teacher librarian in that classroom? So our concerns echo that of the R T A, we request no cuts of staffing. And that is my brief for, for this, I'm putting it on to Nancy Williams.
Hello, good evening, everyone. Nancy Williams, Second Vice President of Q P seven one six. We are going to be repeating the same concerns that you've heard from R T A, from Stacy and from Ian. I'd like to address the career information advisor that is going to be cut in half, more than in half. And I, I'm wondering, is this going to be five schools now divided between two people? That seems like an awful workload, in my opinion. I work in a high school and I can't tell you how many kids ask me about post-secondary avenues. Many kids don't know what they want to do, where they're going to go, they want some advice, they want some handholding, they want to know about. Applying for scholarships, they want to know about the trades. This is what falls into the career advisor's hands, and I can tell you, when I see university week. And the posters come out and we have people come and talk from the university. It, it's a wonderful feeling for these kids who are in grade eleven, grade twelve, don't know what they're going to be doing. This is a very, very important position, a very important job and function in our high schools. You can't cut this, you can't look at cutting these people in half. Each career advisor now, I believe, operates in two schools. And if you're going to take that and put five schools on each of the two remaining advisors, I mean. How is a workload like that going to be logical? Another area I'd like to, to talk about, that's very near and dear to me because I am an E A. Is the E A for literacy. This is one individual who is looking after elementary school kids who can't read or write. And it's not just a simple repeat, repeat, repeat. These children, many of them suffer from dyslexia. The person who is in this position has been for nine years, is trained in Orton Gillingham, which is a specific. Training for reading and writing. And what they do is they try to bring the children, their, their short term memory into a long term memory so that. The reading becomes more of a, a, a smooth transition for them. You know, I'm not trained in Orton Gillingham, so I'm, I'm only, I'm only looking at this from a very narrow point of view, but not, not narrow point of view, but. Not an expert, but I'm wondering if this in person is no longer in this position. Who's going to provide for this very crucial aid to these children? You know, you say that you don't want the classroom to be hurt. But our students are the classroom. And these are the ones who are going to be directly hurt, the students in these classrooms. Thank you.
Ian, just to confirm, does that conclude your presentation and we can move on to questions from trustees?
It does, yes, Scott, thanks.
Thanks very much, and again, thank you, Ian, Stacy and Nancy, very much appreciate your time and comments. And to turn things over for trustee questions at this time, trustee Larson.
Thank you. Ian, you mentioned library technicians work with the students in the classrooms. And then you said something right after that and I didn't catch it and I wondered if you could repeat.
Yeah, well, all, all we're trying to say is that, you know, the, the library is a classroom, it's an extension of the classroom in the school.
Okay, so they're in the libraries, is that correct? So not in.
They work in the libraries, they support the teacher librarian and they bring a specialized skill set. Library technicians, a two-year program, they bring a specialized skill set to complement the teacher librarian. And, yeah, and as, as Stacy said, we're very concerned. Where's, where's this going to be picked up? You only have one teacher in the, in the library. At the high school and you have one library technician at each high school, you cut them in half, it's going to double the workload. Of who? The library technician, they only work seven hours a day. I don't know how the teacher has got more than enough on their plate now, I don't see what is going to be picked up. And we certainly hope it's not going to be student volunteers that are going to be doing Q P work or there's going to be a labor relations problem with that.
I have one more question, if I may. With regards to the career information advisors in the secondary schools. Do I, do, can I ask you or, or do you want me to?
Yeah. I can't answer Nancy, well.
Okay, thank you, I'm just curious. Are they working with the counselors who are also doing the university? I know not so much career prep, but with the post-secondary, like, do they work together as a team?
You know, Heather, honestly, I don't want to give an answer that could be incorrect, I mean, I, I know. A lot about it, but it depends on the makeup of the school, depends on the relationship with the counselor, but, I mean, that is. Their, their job is they have an office in the school that the students have access to. And they have the, the career preparation, I, I'm not sure if it would be more with the, I can get back to you with the answer on that easily tomorrow and let you know, but. My understanding of it is that they perform a specific duty and the, the, like, the school counselors have a, a, a different aspect there, their role there is to. They post, if you've ever been in the schools and see in their office, they have all these different posters up of the post-secondary schools. They have the application deadlines, they also do a lot of work with them, looking into and, and accessing scholarships for students now. I, I think I've heard part of the reason for this is that while there's the internet, they collect things up on the internet, well, there's lots of kids that need the extra support. And then, let's be realistic, we've known through the pandemic that there are some families that do not have internet, that do not have telephones, that do not have laptops. So they provide a valuable resource for these students, the information is there, right in the window, you walk by and go, oh, U B C. Or Royal Bank or, or Coast Capital has these scholarships and that is their role. Is to, to look at sourcing these, these valuable scholarships for students that possibly would not be able to go to post-secondary school. Because they can't afford to, I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
Trustee to Blotany.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate your brief and trustees, you know, will listen and, and as has been stated, you know, consider. Everything you've said. Just have a couple of questions for you, Mr. Hillman, for the literacy E A. Who's trained in Orton Gillingham. Do E A's receive Orton Gillingham training, do any of our other E A's receive that? Do they have the opportunity to become trained? And I guess my other question. Can teachers or are teachers trained in Orton Gillingham and especially our resource teachers? Just, just curious, because I know it's a valuable resource for students that can't read or that are struggling.
Nancy's going to answer that for you, just hang on a sec.
Hi, Orton Gillingham is a very specific type of training. Directly related for reading and writing. The person that is doing this position right now. She meets with, she's at two schools per term and there are three terms, she mostly works with grades two to three. She will go into the school and she will work with small groups of children who are having difficulties or one-on-one if necessary. It's a very specific type of training, I'm an E A, I've been an E A for many, many years, I don't have this training. A person, an individual who would be interested would go and take this training on their own. So it's in addition to whatever training we have as E A's. If that.
Say, in general, E A's wouldn't have that.
No, no, no. It's something that you would pursue on your own and take it separately as a course.
Okay, thank you.
Any other trustee questions? Okay, again, Ian, Stacy, Nancy, thank you very much for taking the time. We know you're over in Victoria engaged in professional learning, et cetera, and we really appreciate you taking the time to be here, thank you.
Thank you as well.
Pleasure, at this time, I'd like to invite Andrew Scallion, President of the Richmond District Parents Association, please.
Thank you, Superintendent. I will read my brief tonight because I'm not as skilled an off-the-cuff speaker as Ian and Liz, so. On behalf of the Richmond District Parents Association, we would like to thank the Richmond Board of Education for this opportunity to submit our feedback on the upcoming twenty twenty two, twenty three budget. We'd like to focus our comments on four areas that we believe are of critical importance to student, staff and parents of the Richmond School District. Personnel cuts, board advocacy, budget vote timing and district restructuring. Personnel cuts. The R D P A believes firmly that the Board of Education should not approve any cuts at or near the classroom level. This includes such. Cuts such as school psychologist, speech language pathologist, career information advisors, E A literary support, teacher consultants and library technicians. Total cost of these cuts is somewhere in the neighborhood of nine hundred and eighty-five thousand and these funds, we believe, should be taken from the unrestricted reserve fund for this year only. Board advocacy. The R D P A very much appreciates all the advocacy work that has been done in the past by the Board of Education on behalf of our district. Unfortunately, the new and recent funding challenges facing our schools with the unprecedented inflationary environment. And the ministry not having increased per student funding are deeply and negatively affecting the situation. This is tantamount to a budget cut. While we are still yet facing structural funding challenges, many feel it has not been this bad for more than thirty years. The trust granted to the Board of Education by the electorate of Richmond is that the board continues to work. To the best of its ability to not allow the education situation to deteriorate. There's also the expectation that the board continues to advocate to improve. The education situation for the students, staff and parents of the Richmond School District. It is deeply felt that the status quo of sending a written letter will not be enough this time by a long shot. The board should be advocating loudly and strongly to the provincial government and the Ministry of Education. In particular, through all means available, including but not necessarily limited to written correspondence, face-to-face advocating with the local M L A's. And messaging through local and regional media. The board should not rest until that message is delivered clearly, without equivocation. And until increased funding has been committed to by the Ministry of Education and the provincial government. We need to do better. And this is why you were elected. We're counting on you to continue fighting for the, the sake of our children. Budget vote timing. It is the RDPA's belief that the Board of Education should postpone the final vote on the 2022-23 budget to the regular June board meeting. This will allow the Board to begin a strong advocacy program that will lead to an increase in the operating grant for 2022-23. As we've stated previously, it is the trust placed in this board that they will not sit back and allow these cuts to happen, but will work tirelessly to see that these important components of our education system enrichment are not lost. District restructuring. We've been told time and time again that the deficits we're facing this year, next year, and the year after that are structural deficits. In our opinion, a structural deficit requires a structural response. We can no longer afford to sit idly by and attempt to stop the bleeding with mere Band-Aids. This Board needs to have the courage to look to the future of this district and restructure where it is prudent, so that we don't have to face these cuts year after year. Our students and our children are being short-changed by our current district structures. Learning opportunities are being lost, and extracurricular experiences are being missed. For too long, this Board has avoided tackling the tough restructuring decisions in this district and kicked that particular can down the road again and again. The RDPA believes it is time for this Board to begin looking at a restructuring program to improve the, the function of our district and allow us to move forward in a positive way rather than having to constantly look for low-hanging fruit every year of budget time. In conclusion, we would like to offer our support and our assistance as the voice of the parents of the Richmond School District. Our children are worth the extra effort that is needed at this pivotal, pivotal time. Having endured two-plus years of pandemic, our eyes have been opened to the parts and pieces of our education system that are truly important. We need to focus our attention on these and move forward in a new direction, because we can do better.
Andrew, thank you very much, very much. I appreciate you being here. And as well, past President Dion McPhee, we're happy to have you here. Trustees, do you have any questions for RDPA? Start with trustee, sorry, loses my mind here, Sergeant. Thank you.
Well, good evening, and I think you've been with us in the trenches advocating. So I just want to reassure the public that perhaps aren't in the room or that don't know that advocacy is a huge part of a trustee's role, and it takes many different avenues, different ways, as you have said. I can't, some of the things we've done to advocate has been outside the box. And I would agree with you, we got to keep doing that. But it's not something new to us. So I just wanted to reassure the public that, that this district actually is quite famous for working with all of our stakeholders and going to the Select Standing Committee. And you know, I've been on the BCSTA Board for eight years. And when I share that, that's not a normal thing. And so I'm really pleased that we have that synergy, that we advocate together. And I would love to continue to do that in our discussion later on this evening. It'll be more than just write a letter. But I would also call on you and all of the Partner Groups Association. I was with the president of BCC PAC on the weekend, and she too is looking for ways to advocate. I would call, I know the BCTF, QP. All the others should also come together as a broad association. I'd be looking for motions to come to your AGM as well, which I think is coming up pretty. And if there's anything we can help with that. So I just want you to know that we are always together with you as partner groups, and we will continue to look in other ways to continue to advocate. The question I had for you was around, I, I think you were asking us to structurally look at our district, and that we haven't really done that. And, you know, we had a new superintendent, I guess, is it year three or four? Twenty-five. And we have done a ton of work. He has done a ton of work with senior staff on looking at all of our departments, creating good action plans from those. We have a really good strategic plan that I'm really proud of. So I'm looking to you to maybe help me or others understand when you say we need to structurally change our district. I'd be really interested, and maybe you don't want to get into it tonight, but I'd be really interested to hear what sort of thoughts you had around that or suggestions, because we're really trying to look at our district in different ways. And we've been doing that for quite some time. So helping that doesn't have to be tonight. I'd love you to hear your suggestions around that.
And we'd be very happy to provide them. As you say, I, I won't open that particular can of worms because I don't think this is necessarily the right place or the right time to do that. But yeah, we do certainly have a lot of ideas around some of the things that need to be restructured in the district and how that can help things move forward. But thank you.
Trustee Tiplotny?
Yes, well, thank you as well for your brief. It was very interesting, and I too did have that question regarding the restructuring program. I'd be interesting to hear, interested to hear, you know, some more details. We have done a lot of restructuring and, in working with our new superintendent. So, but I'm always curious to, to hear more. So I would really appreciate that when, when you can, when you get the opportunity. And I also wanted to talk about the advocacy, because, yes, we have been writing letters and presenting to our Select Standing Committee, working through BCSTA. And, you know, and really taking our advocacy seriously. And, and I don't think, I don't think the ministry ignores letters. But I guess sometimes I have felt that they, they might have. But we, something we haven't done for a long time is have our minister come and visit our district. And that's partially due to COVID. But it might not have been entirely the reason. So, you know, I do think that we should pursue that once again. They've, they've generally been good meetings, and it helps the minister understand the individual, you know, sort of the unique needs of our district. And so I would propose that, that we look at doing that again. And I do believe that we have invited her not too long ago. And also our MLAs, you know, we do, we do meet with them, and we're probably overdue to do that again. So your brief has kind of reminded us about our advocacy, all three briefs. And so now that, well, COVID isn't over, but they might be more willing to come and, and have a, a little meeting with us and the Board and our stakeholders, which is usually really fruitful at, at giving them an idea of, you know, what our district looks like, the things we do well, and the things that we, we need to do, to be able to do things well. So anyway, thank you so much.
Trustee Goldstein?
Thank you, Mr. Super. And thank you, Andrew Dion, for the effort. I know it's, it's not easy to prepare and present as you did. I'd like to concur with Trustees Sergeant Tiplotny about fresh ideas, ideas that you have had, are having now, to, to show the Board. And I would be very interested to be part of such a discussion, to see where we can go with that. Thank you very much for that.
Any other questions from trustees at this time? Andrew and Dion, again, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
We're sorry. Well, we have the floor. Can we just ask one more question? In the, in the past, any years that we've ever depleted or completely depleted our reserve funds? And on average, what is the balance going forward on average every year for our reserve funds when we're not having to dip into it?
Well, the board policy right now is two to four percent. And that's actually under the government's requirement. Government does require all school districts in BC to have a reserves policy and then be transparent and consult with the community to make sure that the committee understands the policy is around that mark.
Yes, sorry, maybe you misunderstood. We understand that that's the board policy. But I, what I'm asking is, how many previous years have we ever completely depleted our reserve funds and not carried over our reserve funds into the next year? So when we're looking at spending some of our reserve funds, has there ever been a time in the past where we've completed, you know, completely used our reserve funds and had, did not have that safety net?
So, so I think what we'd have to do is go back and do some homework on that, Dion, and we're certainly able to and willing to do that. And then we'd provide a response to you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Trustee Sergeant, do you have a question?
Well, just to comment on that, I think it would be fiscally irresponsible not to have, have some reserve. It's called reserve, but there's a misunderstanding. It's like completely draining your bank account and have nothing left, just in case something were to happen. So it is a ministry requirement, because it's fiscally responsible. You can't, you can't have it zero, because we have, we have insurance. We have, like, if something were to go wrong, all of our liability, our employees', insurance, et cetera. So it's, it's really not doable.
We're not asking to completely, I'm just asking, in the past, on average, how much of our reserve funds have we dipped into in previous years? And if we're looking to spend some of our, our reserve funds this year, and the habit, because we have had to dip into it before, but we've always left a certain percentage. And that's what I'm asking. What is that certain percentage, the lowest we've ever gone in it in the previous years? Sorry if I didn't explain that well enough before.
Thank you. We're, we're happy to look that up. Sorry, just before you sit down, I see trustee Lee has raised his hand, and I apologize. I just want to make sure that he doesn't perhaps have a question for you. Trustee Lee?
Thank you, Superintendent. Although, for me, it was some years ago that I did my last several years of high school in a Vancouver high school. But I still vividly remember how the librarian at my high school in Vancouver helped me in several very important ways. She helped me, took interest in, hey, what careers are there that I can pursue after I finish high school? She also gave me pointers how to improve my comprehension skills in reading. And she also raised my interest in what areas of interest should I direct my readings to that would help me decide what careers I'm going to choose. Because of that, I like to know a little more detail on the cuts that we're making to our now-called librarian technicians. How many are there in our school district? And the cuts that we're proposing to librarian technicians? What is the percentage in terms of what is the percentage being cut compared to the total number of librarian technicians that we have in the district?
Thank you, trustee Lee. Staff will be happy to provide that information again to trustees in an email tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you again.
Thanks.
So at this time, we'll be moving on to members of the public who have signed up to present this evening. We will be beginning with Jessica Lee. And if you could come forward to the microphone, please.
Can I answer Richard's question, Scott?
Not at this time, Ian, no. Thank you. We'll provide that information.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Lee, and I am a full-time library technician at RC Palmer Secondary. Libraries are frequently the first place people look at when budget cut decisions need to be made. But there is a lot happening behind the scenes that often gets missed or people are unaware of. Coincidentally, the theme for education week 2022 this week is about connections. Library technicians are a primary source of that for a lot of these students. The best and most important value we bring are the connections we make with the kids. They don't just come to us when they have questions about technology or books. But a lot of them rely on the library programs, events and activities that library techs are in charge of, ones that teacher librarians don't have time for because they are too busy with other matters. Library techs are in a unique situation where we get to know these kids outside of their label as a student, and we develop a close bond with them because of it. If something good or bad happens to them, they come and share that with us because they feel comfortable talking to us. We are their safe haven that allows them to be their true selves and a refuge for when life gets tough. To them, we aren't teacher figures, we're in charge of their grades, nor are we scary authority figures. Instead, we are adults they can put their trust into, and no other support staff in a school is in a position to develop these kinds of connections daily. Taking library techs full-time out of the library means more closures because there aren't enough staff onsite to run the libraries. Students will lose access to the space, and the adults will support them outside of the classroom. I'm in charge of two library clubs, library monitors and the book review club. And the connections I made with these kids have been invaluable. When they heard about the possible budget cuts, they rallied together and asked me what they could do to help. They shared their dread and what their school experience would be like without someone like me there to support them. As Ms. Larson very eloquently posted on her Twitter today, "We need to stop, listen and pay attention to what students have to say." "They see the efforts library techs make and the safe, encouraging environment we've created as we move from a traditional hush-hush library to an open, diverse library learning commons." Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for coming to speak. If I can ask you just to sit, just for a moment, in case trustees have questions for you. And I know you're nervous, and I understand, and we're really happy that you're here today. So thank you. Trustees, any questions at all? Again, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, trustee Nixon.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Wanted to thank you for, for coming tonight, for helping us understand more about what library technicians do, not just do, but, but are to a school and to a library, Learning Commons, as you mentioned. It's been, I think, personally really excited to see how our libraries have become over the last number of years, really a Learning Commons and a space for students to feel safe and supported and develop relationships. So I really do, it's mostly a comment. Appreciate you coming to, to help us understand that and your work and what it means to you. And we certainly are hearing from, from students and are going to be, our commitment is to listen, absolutely, and to, to understand what kind of impact changes in that will, will have. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Nixon. Trustee Lee, I see your hand up.
Thank you, Superintendent Robinson. May I have, because I missed it, may I have the name of the presenter we have at the table now? The, who just spoke, the lady?
Certainly. It's Jessica Lee, and Jessica Lee is a, a library technician in our school district.
And is it possible for me to be told which secondary school? If it's that, that this young lady, it's a librarian technician app?
Yep, I work at RC Palmer Secondary.
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent.
You're welcome. Trustee Tiplotny?
Yes, I'm just curious, because we did receive a written copy of the RTA's brief. And, but we don't have written copies of the other briefs. And then I'm wondering if we could also have a copy of your presentation as well. I, I think it's helpful when we're considering. So I'd appreciate it, and I know trustees would as well. So, okay.
Thank you, trustee Tiplotny, for that reminder. And certainly, we would ask that anyone who is presenting this evening, if you haven't already submitted your brief, if you could do that by sending it to the school district budget website. Thank you very much. Any other trustee questions? Again, thank you very much. It takes a lot of courage to come up, and we really appreciate it. So thank you. This time, I'd like to call up Megan Ritter, please.
Hi, I'm Megan Ryder. I am a library technician at JN Burnett Secondary. I'm also a parent in the district, coming to the end of our 13 years. It's a little shocking. So Jess has touched on a number of points that I was going to make. So I'm going to paraphrase what I've got a little bit here. I've tried to combine parent hat and working hat all in the same three minutes. I would like to echo a lot of the comments of them being tonight that appreciating the look was not to impact students in the classroom. But anytime you take away people who work directly with students, you are impacting those students in the classroom. As a parent, that is where some of my eyes went when I was. As a parent, that is where some of my eyes went when I was looking at what was on there. We have been lucky enough not to have to access some of the services that have been on offer, but have friends who have. And for instance, the Orton-Gillingham, taking that out of the district, my heart dropped. I've worked too many years with children with reading challenges to see that and not think, oh dear God. So from a parent point of view, no cuts are good, no cuts are wanted. The cuts that take people away from the students, to me, are the ones that really need to be reevaluated. The parent hat. Going on to the library tech hat. We have a, a unique role in our schools as a library technician. We work in tandem with a partner in a library with the teacher librarians. And our being onsite allows them to do their vital role of supporting teachers in classrooms, supporting the teaching, A, the teacher actually teaching classes, curating resources for them, providing that added knowledge base, that extra set of hands, that extra set of knowledge that is vital for the work that happens in our schools. To do that, they're out of the library a lot. They go lunchtime is collaboration, and that's when teachers can collaborate. It's on their lunch break. If you're out of the library at the lunch, the library is closed for lunchtime. When do kids need to access the library? Lunchtime. Having the techs onsite allows that library to be open all day long. There's always somebody there. There's always somebody there if somebody needs to print. There's always somebody there if somebody needs a book. There's always somebody there if someone just needs somewhere to be. That's not in the classroom. That's not trying to do their spare in the multipurpose room. That's not somewhere that's overwhelming. We're that space. And there's always somebody there because there's two of us and we can do that. We can support the T Ls and what they do for the teachers, and we can support the students. As Jessica has pointed out, we also have a really different connection with the students. We aren't teachers. We aren't counselors. We aren't admin. We don't deal with the, you know, you need to have this work done in time to get your grades. And don't get me wrong, I will play the mama bear every so often with the kids. Did you really want to leave it this long? But it's a different relationship. It supports and, and enhances what they have with the other staff in the school. But it's that trusted adult who doesn't have a hand in what that's going to look like for them with regards to marks or behavior or this, that and the other thing. They don't get that anywhere else in the school. They simply don't. It's, it's the nature of the beast. So when we talk about kids coming to talk to us, sometimes it's a very simple, you know, I see them every day for a book. But you see them once a week, you see them for printing, and it's a very quick, how you're doing this and the other thing. Other times, that, how am I doing? It's a really bad day, Mrs. Ryder. And all of a sudden, you get 25 minutes of because you've become that trusted adult, because you've had those little connections all the way through when they come in and you make those connections. And you don't have that same authority figure to them. You're still an adult. You're still a trusted adult. But it's a different, whole different combination. I'm trying to keep this short because I know there's a lot still going on. I want to kind of finish a little bit with, my son is a library kid. I was a library kid. When things got hard, you went to the library. That was the safe space. He grew up at a time when we had halftime librarians in elementary school. So with all the best will in the world, they didn't have time to be there. When he went to grade eight, that was one of the best things that could happen. There was always somebody in the library because there was a tech. So either librarian was there or the tech was there. My kid's a bit of an introvert. He goes to MacMath. It is a very big school. Having that space to go was unimaginably wonderful for him to have that space. We see that every year in our school, especially in the fall when you are full of grade eights, because that's the safe space to go to. This big, the halls are big, the halls are scary. There are very tall students for them. Where's that safe space? It's in the library. Taking techs out of the library means the library closes. It's a simple matter. Teacher librarians can't clone themselves. All the will in the world, they have too much else on their plate for it. In a time where our kids, the world has given our kids a hell of a hit. The last two years, we know the mental health is an issue. We know that anxiety is high. Taking that added trusted adult, potential trusted adult, and that safe space away from them at this time. There's got to be another way. There's got to be something else. Thank you for your time. I thank you for letting me speak this evening. I will send you a brief, but one that's not written all over with my notes.
Thank you very much, and I want to apologize. I mispronounced your name at the beginning.
It's all good. I should have kept my own name when I married.
No, thank you. Trustees, any questions at all? Trustee Goldstein.
Thank you very much for your heartfelt explanation. Are there any times of day where the library is empty?
Depends on the day. I can't say that, oh yes, every day between this and this, it's going to be empty. Because there's no, it's an ebb and a flow. So some weeks are we super quiet? Yes. Other weeks do we have kids in and out and in and out and in and out, which is usually the weeks we plan on doing something intense? Yes. There is no set time. It would be hard to make a set time to say, yeah, this is a good time to close. Can I also, did you want the answer with the number of percentage of techs being?
Actually, I've asked one of our senior staff to address that at the end of the presentations, but thank you, though. Appreciate it. Again, thank you very much for, for coming this evening. Our next presenter is David Yang.
Good evening, trustees. My name is David Yang. My postcode is V6Y2G2. And before I begin, I'd like to recognize that I'm on the traditional unceded and ancestral territories of the Musqueam, Kwantlin and Tewasim First Nations. I recognize my positionality as a settler, a learning for most of my life here in Richmond. I came here because obviously we were, the budget process is underway and I've been paying some close attention to this process as well. I just wanted to come here today to voice my support for the ELL programs here in the district. The teachers, the staff that support our ELL programs. And the reason why I wanted to do that today is because, you know, just speaking from my own personal experience with Richmond schools, I attended Cook Elementary and McNeil Secondary, and those are some 10 years that I've been in the Richmond School District as a student. And throughout that time, I constantly had to rely on what they call ESL back then. ESL support, and I went through the various levels and I did end off finishing five years of ESL training. And because that was the, the limit back then, I'm not sure what it is now, but back then it was five years and so I was out of that system. But I, I started, I was an immigrant to Canada and I didn't speak a word in English when I started school here in Canada. So I, I know from my personal experience how important it is for students here in Richmond that we strengthen and, and continue to fund, adequately fund our ELL programs going forward. I, while I was doing my homework, I noticed that, you know, we had, if I didn't butcher the, the math there, $7.9 million, $7.9 million that were allocated to ELL staff wages and, and supplies. And that is, again, if my math was correct, 3.6% of the total annual budget in terms of expenditures. While I recognize that the money is there, I think there's room to do more. And so with that said, I like, like to just ask two brief questions. Of the $160 million in projected salary expenses and $220 million of projected total expenditure in the 2023 budget. How much of that will be going towards ELL instruction and program support? And my second question is, understanding that we are facing a shortfall this year, will the board and staff ensure that funding for ELL instruction and programs will not be cut? So those are my two questions, and I appreciate if I can get a response for that. And while I have the floor, I just wanted to quickly mention that, you know, I, I recognize the contingent here of library technicians and support staff, and I just wanted to give them a shout out and acknowledgement. Because for me, as, you know, a former student, I, I grew up in the libraries. I spent my time in, it was my safe haven as well. It was my place to develop my quiet skills, you know, doing your readings and, you know, you know, learning things quietly. And so I, I wanted to acknowledge them why I have the floor here and I wish them all the best in this budget process. So yeah, that, that wraps it up. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. So you had a couple of questions there. The first question might take us a bit of time to figure out the numbers for you, and so what we'll do is reach out with that information, okay? And your second question, I believe, was, was there a commitment on the part of senior staff and trustees to maintain? I certainly can't comment on behalf of the board. I don't know whether there's any trustees who wish to comment at this time on that, or whether you may perhaps need to wait and see what kind of decisions the board does make throughout this process. Okay. And a question from trustee Nixon. Thank you. The hands are looking.
Always putting my hand up at the last second.
You know what it is? Is on my screen, your, the hand gets lost and the letters behind you, and I apologize. Please go ahead.
Thank you, David. Yeah, thank you for, for speaking to the board tonight. I just had a question. We were talking about the ELL program because I know in the, in previous years there have, sometimes there have been proposals around ELL. I know RTA have, have often mentioned ELL and advocated for, for more support there. And I'm, I'm actually, I'm, I'm not totally sure you asked a question about whether or not the five years is the, the limit for support and whether that is still the case. Whether anyone could answer that?
Certainly. I would ask Executive Director McMillan if you wouldn't mind turning your camera on and responding to that question. Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you, and I appreciate the question. And I actually suspect I may have been David Yang's vice principal once upon a time. Lovely to see you. You've grown up quite a bit since I last saw you all those years ago. So what it, what the five years reflects is actually the years of funding from the ministry. Here in Richmond, that doesn't mean the ceasing of support. So as a student completes five years of funded services, we review, and schools review all of their students to see where would the best supports be. And if there is continued language acquisition needs, the fund, the support continues regardless of the, the funding levels to the, to the ministry.
Thank you very much.
And trustee Nixon, if I can add, so I, I really appreciate the, Ms. McMillan's clarification there. And I just wanted to add that, you know, if you ask any linguists, people who study the signs of language, they'll tell you that to learn a new language, it takes more than five years. For me, it took, my, my journey was, I would say, more than 10 years when I first came to Canada. And so it's really important that we strengthen those language support for, for students, particularly in such a multicultural district like ours.
Appreciate that you've raised that and, and it may be something that needs to come back to the forefront in terms of our advocacy as, as well for, for the funding. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, well, just for one moment, Mr. Yang, we've got one more question from trustee Tobolny.
Yes, well, it's more a question for superintendent, but I did want to thank Ms. McMillan for, you know, explaining that we do go above and beyond the level five and any support that's needed is still provided. Regardless, and, but I did wonder if possibly our secretary treasurer could explain how the ELL funding works, because I do believe that we receive per student funding. I think there's some federal funding as well, isn't it? I thought there was.
Yeah, sure. I'd be happy to respond to your question.
And maybe if we can right now.
For sure. Yeah, I'll try to answer your question. If I can't, we'll, we'll get information back to you as well. So yeah, we do receive approximately $1,800 per ELL students within the five years time span, the funded time period. So that's on top of the per student rate that we receive for base education funding. Yes, we, we, the federal funding, I think you're referring to the Frankphone. Frankphone grant, but we don't, as a public board, we don't necessarily receive that. That's the information we have.
Okay. And seeing no further questions, again, thank you very much for coming to present this evening. Very much appreciate it.
Thank you. It's great to be back.
Next speaker is Travis Trong. Okay, okay. Thank you very much for being here anyway. Just want to confirm, Andrew Ryder, were you wanting to speak or here as a support? Okay, thank you. Just didn't want you to lose the opportunity. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to present to the board at this time? Okay. I'm going to ask our Executive Director of Human Resources just to come on camera and provide a response to the question that trustee Lee asked earlier in the meeting regarding the proposed FTE and what would be the remaining FTE on the library technicians. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. So I'm happy to speak to this. At the current time, we have library technicians in our secondary schools. We do not have library technicians in our elementary schools. Elementary schools have a different staffing model and have library staffing according to school size. So even in our elementary schools, we, some schools have full-time librarians and some have part-time librarians without library technicians. In secondary schools, which is where this budget proposal is focused, and we have our 10 secondary schools and each of those schools currently has a 1.0 full-time library technician in place. The budget proposal that is in front of you at this time proposes a reduction to 5.0. So the position of library technician is still retained in our secondary schools at a reduced FTE. And the allocation of that 5.0 FTE would be subject to discussion and collaboration across our schools with our HR team and as per the collective agreement processes with QP. So the library technicians remain in place in our secondary schools at a reduced FTE.
Thank you very much. So seeing that we have no further members of the audience wanting to speak, I just wanted to say thank you to everybody who spoke this evening. It takes a great deal of courage to come up and speak to the board and senior staff, particularly in front of a group of people and in, in a virtual meeting as well. And I wanted to express my personal appreciation for the fact that you were willing to do that this evening. So thank you very much. Chairperson, at this time, I'm going to turn things back over to you.
Thank you very much, Superintendent. So at this time, I'd be looking for a trustee to move the recommendation that the Board of Education rise and report from the committee of the whole discussion on the 2022-2023 operating budget. Are the hands I see on my screen for moving and seconding? Trustee Sergeant, thank you for moving. Trustee Larson, seconding. All in favor? And that's carried. So we are moving out of the committee of the whole. And again, just a thank you to everyone who has spoken tonight. It's, hearing from our community is, is one of the most important parts of our budget process. And we thank you also for the patience with the process tonight. And just a reminder, again, our secretary treasurer had mentioned at the beginning of the meeting that there's still opportunity to submit comments by email. And information is available right on the homepage of the school district website. And if you are staying for, further into the meeting, you, we will be getting to the board advocacy item and be hearing some conversation about that. And one more motion. Would a trustee be prepared to move that the Board of Education, Richmond, refer all stakeholders? Would a trustee be prepared to move that the Board of Education Richmond refer all stakeholder and public input and feedback to the budget process? Uh, trustee Larson, thank you for moving. Uh, trustee Goldstein, thank you. You're seconding. All those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Uh, trustee Lee, yes?
I'm sorry, uh, I wasn't quick enough, I guess. Uh, may I have the motion read again?
Oh, I, yes, sorry. Um, I should have double checked. We were all, uh, raising our hands. The motion was that the Board of Education refer all stakeholder and public input and feedback to the budget process.
Thank you. And I would have, uh, voted in favor.
Okay, thank, thank you very much. Sorry to move a little too quickly there. My apologies. And I'm going to find my agenda now. So we are now at item six B on our agenda and, um, there is a report from the diversity and anti-racism working group along with a recommendation. And I'm going to ask our assistant superintendent, Crystal Brodigan, to speak to the report. This is on page 22 of your agenda.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present the diversity and anti-racism working group recommendation highlights this evening. And as Chairperson Nixon noted, this is on page 22 of the public board package. In June of 2020, the Board of Education passed a motion for the diversity and anti-racism working group to be formed with a mandate that has included consultation with students, staff and other partner groups regarding their experiences with racism within the school district. A review of what the district is currently doing with respect to educating students about various forms of racism. A review of, uh, current district policy and practices and to make recommendations to the board for further action. This work is also embedded in strategic priority two equity and inclusion specifically goals one and two. The diversity and anti-racism working group is comprised of trustee representatives as well as members from partner groups, QP, RASA, RDPA, RMAPs, RTA and executive. The diversity and anti-racism working group was formed in the fall of 2020. To fulfill the board's mandate, the diversity and anti-racism working group sought the services of a consulting company to conduct a diversity and equity, equity and inclusion or DEI audit. And we determined that Bacau Consulting located in Vancouver provided the best fit for our mandate and for our criteria. The team at Bacau Consulting gathered, uh, and analyzed both qualitative and quantitative data in June 2021 from surveys, focus groups and a policy review. The audit package from Bacau Consulting was received in November 2021 um, and includes survey data in the form of graphs and charts, analysis of the data, focus group summaries and analysis of policies and procedures and recommendations. The data represents the personal stories and experiences of the participants in the surveys and focus groups. And the diversity and anti-racism working group is extremely grateful to the students, parents and staff who contributed to the audit process by filling in the surveys and participating in focus groups. It was hu- of high importance to the working group that all of the data was considered very carefully in order to honor the vulnerability with which people came forward to share their views and their experiences. And while there are many areas where the district is doing well in relationship to DEI, the intention of this report and the audit package from Bacau Consulting is to draw our attention to areas for potential improvement. The diversity and anti-racism working group engaged in a process of systematically reviewing the audit package from Bacau Consulting. And after a thorough analysis, the working group is bringing forward the recommended priorities contained in the, in the report for the board's consideration. The first recommendation is to establish a DEI advisory committee. The diversity and anti-racism working group has identified eight further priorities outlined in the report and based in the audit package from Bacau Consulting. These priorities require focused attention from staff and partner groups to ensure they are successfully implemented. And a DEI advisory committee that includes representatives from partner groups will support the priorities through ongoing engagement and commitment to the identified priorities and review of progress on them. The next two, um, recommendations are to develop an employee-focused DEI implementation strategy and a student-focused DEI implementation strategy. Participants across our employee groups expressed a strong desire for learning opportunities related to DEI. Many, um, adult respondents referenced inappropriate joking and stereotypes as regular occurrences in our schools and district workplaces. It will be important to develop learning opportunities for all employees to make clear the impact of inappropriate behavior as well as setting a clear expectation for appropriate behaviors. Many student respondents referenced inappropriate joking and stereotyping as regular and frequent occurrences in school. Some students also reported feeling marginalized, unsafe, unheard and discriminated against. Many students expressed a desire though to be involved in the solution and in supporting their fellow students to understand the impact and harm caused through behaviors that further feelings of marginalization and exclusion. The next recommendation is to support all students in facilities to be safe and brave spaces. Spaces that are inclusive of all and where all employees, students, parents and the community feel comfortable learning, working and sharing and growing are considered to be safe and brave. The surveys and focus groups surfaced that many students reported feeling excluded in school settings. Additionally, many students, parents and staff expressed that they feel powerless to share their thoughts and feelings. The opportunities to hear and take action on feedback from our partner groups on an ongoing basis will strengthen the overall commitment to the district's DEI goals and contribute to the growth of safe and brave spaces. Following that recommendation is to ensure that clear reporting guidelines for incidents causing harm such as discrimination, racism and sexual harassment are implemented, including measures to make reporting safer and to provide clarity regarding all steps that will be followed in the process. Across our all partner groups, there was considerable feedback about a lack of clarity regarding what to do if harm is caused, how to report it, who to report it to and what the next step should be. It was expressed discomfort in reporting to school personnel for fear of how the person reporting might be viewed for bringing an issue forward. A further recommendation is to update and/or develop policies and regulations with clearly articulated DEI principles and consideration of the intended reading audience. Yeah, the next slide, please. Policies and regulations are the foundations from, uh, where our school districts values and commitment to equity and inclusion are articulated. It was identified that many policies include outdated language that does not reflect today's evolving terminology. Ensuring that policies are reviewed and developed with DEI principles in mind will help make the commitment to equity and inclusion more visible. Next is to increase student voice and leadership in DEI initiatives. A number of students expressed a desire to be directly involved in supporting DEI work in our schools. The students who participated in focus groups were passionate advocates for cultivating a sense of ownership and youth leadership in the area of DEI and expressed that their peers would be more inclined to model behavior they see championed by other students. Next recommendation is to engage in decolonizing practices as part of the board's commitment to truth and reconciliation as referenced in strategic priority one, goal three, and the district's current Aboriginal enhancement agreement. Active reflection on the impact of systemic structures that many view as colonial is an important aspect of DEI work. And the final recommendation is to develop inclusive supports to the parent and caregiver community, including parent advisory councils. Increasing parental engagement by developing a greater appreciation and celebration of diversity is extremely important to the parent-school relationship. Diversity within our school communities continues to grow and many parents express a desire to learn how to strengthen relationships across diverse communities. A number of parents also expressed a desire to learn more about what is happening in schools so that they can partner in deepening their child's learning related to DEI. The district is very, very grateful to all members of the diversity and anti-racism working group who have demonstrated an enormous commitment to the mandate set out by the board in June of 2020. As the mandate of the working group comes to a close and the board considers the priorities identified in this report, the members of the diversity and anti-racism working group would also like to thank the board for its ongoing commitment to furthering the work of diversity, equity and inclusion through the goals of the strategic plan, further supported by the findings of this working group. The diversity and anti-racism group would also like to express sincere gratitude to the students, parents and staff who shared their voices through the survey and focus group process. That is the end of my report and I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Brodigan, for this report. Um, we have been, the board has been following the work of the working group and the consultation. Uh, trustee representatives have been involved in that as well. It's really good to see the work, um, coming to fulfillment. There is a recommendation here for the board, for trustees' consideration, but I'd wanted to maybe begin by seeing if trustees have questions for Ms. Brodigan on the report. On the report itself, before we move to, to considering recommendation. Oh. I'm looking at you, but you were asked to use the Zoom. I'm now looking at the Zoom. Here I go. So trustee Goldstein, I see your hand first.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Keep forgetting about the microphone. Sorry, Richard. Uh, thank you very, ma'am chair, and thank you, uh, Assistant Superintendent Brodigan. It's very great. The, the report is quite broad and thorough and covers all the main points that the, at the, uh, board wishes to cover. And I'm sure we have full confidence that the, uh, committee will do good work and do justice to our expectations. So thank you for your, um, facilitation in that, in that, in that, that working group. I'd like to ask about what's foreseen in the terms of reference for moving forward with this, uh, new working group. In the past, we made a distinction between, uh, supervising and facilitating for the staff member of the working group. But will there be a staff member supervising as opposed to facilitating this working group as, as far as you see it?
Is that a fair question for this?
Sorry, Ms. Brodigan, would you like to answer? Yeah. Sorry, yeah, I was just expecting you could, please go ahead.
Um, yes, so, um, in the, um, in the report on page 24, there are some draft terms of reference there for the board's consideration, uh, with the expectation that, that those terms of reference will need to be more fully fleshed out with more detail, uh, and description. But just as an idea for, uh, for how this may go forward. So you can see there that the composition of the, um, advisory committee would include trustee representation, um, as well as staff, specifically, uh, an assistant superintendent, executive director of human resources and, um, our district administrator for equity and inclusion and teacher consultant for equity inclusion, all who have responsibilities, uh, in the DEI portfolio. Um, and then our partner group representatives, um, to help provide, um, their thoughts and experiences and, and for, um, for staff to bring forward, uh, work that is being done in relation to the priorities identified in this report.
So, so my, so, so question is, would that be a supervisory role by the staff member?
Well, probably that would still need to be, uh, fleshed out and when, when the terms of reference are fully created.
So, so madam chair, I, I will have a, when the motion, when the recommendation, I've assumed would be moved. If not, I'll move it. I'm sure it will be. I have, uh, a, um, an amendment, uh, an amendment I would like to put to that when that hap- at that time.
Okay, thank you, trustee Goldstein.
Thank you very much.
We're going to just continue with trustee, trustee questions, um, and then we'll go back to that. Trustee Toblotny?
Yeah, well, I didn't really have a question. It was a comment on, on, uh, the experience of, uh, actually sitting as a trustee on the committee, if that's okay to proceed now?
Yes, sure. Go ahead.
Yes, trustee Hamaguchi and myself did, uh, sit on the committee. We had many meetings. But I would say one of the first meetings was really, uh, caused me to lose sleep because it was such a huge task and, um, how to achieve, such an important thing as, uh, achieving, you know, working towards anti-racism and, and, uh, et cetera, in our schools. I just, I just didn't know how we were going to start and how we were going to move forward. And the committee all agreed that, you know, we, we could use a little help. So, um, Crystal, uh, brought forward a proposal for a consultant and, uh, Crystal did provide great leadership, but, you know, outside consulting was, uh, I think a really good, um, option for us and Bacau was a great fit. Uh, the others, um, not so much, but Bacau was fantastic. And, um, I would have to say that I've learned just so much, um, being on this committee. And, uh, you know, the results of the surveys were actually sometimes heartbreaking and, um, really hard for us to, to see, but um, I believe that they're going to lead us forward on a good path to, um, to some, you know, to, well, to anti-racism, to, uh, having safer spaces in our schools and safer procedures for, uh, our students and our staff. To be able to feel comfortable in bringing concerns forward. So, um, I do think that all the recommendations, um, outlined, uh, in the report are, are fantastic. I think they'll move us forward. And especially, I, you know, I really do think that we have a lot of policy work and policy has been waiting for this report and the recommendations to be approved. A lot of our policies, and this was discussed at the committee level, um, are, are very old and the language in them is very old. The procedures are ancient and, um, and where they're documented. And so I really do feel that it's really important to look at, at all our policies and with a filter for DEI. So I really, really like that recommendation from this report. Um, I also think though that as trustees and as a district, we need to, um, advocate to the Ministry of Education for curriculum and resources and, uh, training for our, um, for this initiative. I, um, I really think that will be important. And, um, I think we'll have some ongoing advocacy work. And the student voice, I really do think, you know, our students are going to move us forward. This is where it's going to come from, right from the bottom up. And, uh, so I think students are gonna, gonna provide us with the, with the information that we need to move forward. So all of this and the reporting, um, mechanism to the board and the strat plan, uh, I really do think a committee should be formed. Such as we did with SOGI. We have a SOGI, uh, committee that is, is doing some great work and, and it reports to the board. So, you know, we get regular updates and, and it's been, it's been fantastic. So I'm really appreciating the report and really looking back on a job well done after, after all our meetings. So, and, uh, under Crystal's, uh, Crystal's, um, Ms. Brodigan's leadership, I, I really think, you know, we did some good work here and hopefully it will make a huge difference to our district. Uh, I will, I, can I move the motion yet or wait?
I would think, um, if, if trustees are mainly looking to make comments, we could put the, uh, motion on the floor if you're, if you're prepared to move.
I am prepared to move the motion. Recommendation so that the board received the report of the diversity and anti-racism working group and support the priorities identified through, uh, establishment of a DI advisory committee to work with staff to move forward on the priorities identified by the diversity and anti-racism working group. And, uh, number two, monitoring the process on these priorities. And number two, monitoring the process on these priorities through the strategic plan update process, regular reporting from the DEI advisory committee through the board, standing committee structure, and an annual report to the board from the DEI advisory committee.
So thank you. And just to clarify for trustees, that motion mirrors the wording of the recommendation that's in the report. Just in case anyone's having, having trouble with the microphones or anything. So that's the recommendation. That's on page 22 of the agenda package. That recommendation has just been moved by trustee Toblatney. So looking for a second or, and so we've already got a list of hands there. So trustee Larson, a seconding, thank you. And so we'll, we'll continue with discussion. Sounds like you've made opening remarks, trustee Toblatney, for, for the motion. Okay, so we'll continue with the speaker's list. So trustee, trustee Sergeant.
Thank you. Well, it's a, evening's getting long already, but I really do want to take a moment to say that when we were having all the discussions in the community on strat planning, especially with the young people, and they really telling us, hey, you need to pay attention to this. It's like when the young people said before, came before us and said, you need to pay attention to SOGI, and you need to have safe places for us, and they're not there. So it's, I'm so pleased it's in our strat plan. I'm so pleased that we had a working group that really took this on. And I can imagine it was probably really difficult to hear the stories. And to the people that shared those stories, it takes a lot of strength. And I really want to say a heartfelt thank you. And I really, when you hear stories like that, you have to own them, and you have to make sure that you do something with them. And so I appreciate the report, but it's what happens next that really does really matter. And so it's big work. It's not, okay, we're done next year. It's work that we have to keep going and talking and learning. And as a board, I believe we and staff, we all have to be accountable to the stories that we heard. And so we need to be accountable to the community. And I know in the report, it says it will come back to the board, which is really reporting to the community. And I'm, I'm really pleased with all the recommendations, including the DEI advisory committee. And I had some hesitation around the advisory committee because sometimes people go, well, they're going to do all the work. We don't have to do anything. And it's not because people want to do that. It's just because people are super busy. And so you don't want a district or a company to say, well, the department or committee is working on that, and we just, we'll wait to hear what they say. Oh, my son is calling me on my computer. But I think it's a really good place to have that discussion. And, you know, I had a couple wording changes that I might have made with the terms. But I think the committee, these are draft, take it back to the committee and say, you know, this is what I heard at the board table. And, and what I would want them to hear is they are not responsible to make all this happen. They are an advisory committee to look at the work that staff's doing, community members are doing, and report back to say, here, we're not seeing this, or there are some gaps here. So with that, I know you will take it back to the group and have a discussion. And really, the terms need to feel good to the group as well. But to, to the people that are probably not listening, but I still want to say that the stories that they told us took a lot of bravery, and it was staff too and students, and we have to take that really seriously. And I'm really committed to this report and its ongoing work. So thank you.
You, trustee Sergeant, trustee Larson?
Thank you. I can't tell you how much I've learned already just from the workshops and what you have provided us information-wise. I've learned, and it's opened my mind. So the idea of the committee, I think, is so important because the committee's learning, and then you're sharing the learning with us. And I'm, I'm very excited about this, and I felt very, I felt what you've provided us is so solid in the sense of, I immediately went to, with the terms of reference, I went to what we're doing with SOGI, which has grown. And it's so wonderful to have something that we can glean from, even though there's different things, but at the same time, they come together. But also with reference to the strategic plan and how staff has provided us with, we knew what our goals were, we knew what the objectives were, and now we get to receive how that looks and how that happens. And so I, I, I think what you have provided us with is a very solid report, and I'm, I'm proud of it, and thank you for all the work that's taken place. We're very lucky. Thank you.
And the entire working group.
Oh, yes, I, I know.
Thank you, trustee Larson. I have trustee Hamaguchi next.
There we go. You know, human nature being what it is, when you come up with a problem, you know, it's, you want to solve it right away. And the challenges we have here, you know, with, with this, the whole issue around the report is there are many layers to it and to the problem. And I think the committee has done a good job at sort of identifying them all. I've always been an action person, and I've sort of made that clear throughout the discussions in our committee. And as much as I feel very good about the report that has come out, I'm looking more forward to us putting more meat to, to some of the recommendations. And I'm very confident that under this Brodegum's direction that we are going to get there. And, but knowing that this is, this is not an overnight solution, and it's going to take time because it would take a lot of hard work. But I think we have all the pieces here to make a really big difference. And so thank you to everyone who was a part of this. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Hamaguchi. Trustee Goldstein.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. So again, it's a great report. I do have an amendment I'd like to put on the table here to, to the motion. It concerns the terms of reference. The terms of reference overall, I think, are really good as a high-level outline. But of course, the devil is in the details. For example, one question I would have, would the staff member have the authority to veto a decision of the working group, a vote of the working group? And this comes back to my question, both facilitating versus supervising. So anyways, all that can be decided now. But, so here's the amendment, and if the amendment passes, we'll have plenty of time to discuss all that. So the amendment is, is just to tack on another paragraph to the current motion. And it goes as follows. And further that, the terms of reference be submitted to the board for approval. The committee may begin their work before receiving the approval. The approval by the board can be by unanimous email or by resolution of the board.
Trustee Goldstein, would you mind repeating that slowly?
Oh, I'm sorry.
So that, just again, so that we can get it down for everybody. Thanks.
So it would be a paragraph to just to tack on to the current motion. And further that, the terms of reference be submitted to the board for approval. The committee may begin their work before receiving the approval. The approval by the board can be by unanimous email or by resolution of the board.
Okay, I think we need it one more time.
Okay. I'll start beginning. And further that, the terms of reference be submitted to the board for approval. The committee may begin their work before receiving the approval. The approval by the board can be by unanimous email or by resolution of the board.
I'm just checking to make sure we have it down. Okay. Do trustees need, need it read again before we go to discussion? Actually, we aren't going to go to discussion until we have a second or for that motion. So do trustees need that, that amendment read again? Anybody need it? Trustee Lee, I think I, are you trying to make a comment? Because we, we can't hear you. Are you on mute?
I'm trying to ask clarification of the wordings of that amendment that I heard. May I go ahead now?
Sure, yes.
Okay, now, I might not have it word for word, but to trustee Goldstein, you said in the last paragraph, it must be, I do, it can be, I do approve by the board unanimously by email or by resolution. Now, when you say by resolution, you mean by majority, am I correct?
I mean by majority at a, at an officially constituted board meeting.
Now, was that yes or no to my question? Or it could be passed, approved by the board by resolution, meaning majority is what's required, but not more?
It means majority resolution voted on by the, by the board at a, at an official meeting where the majority, a majority vote would pass the resolution.
Thank you. That's the answer I was looking for.
So I'm looking for a second or for that amendment. Trustee Lee, you're seconding the amendment?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And so we'll go to discussion on the amendment. I had my hand here.
Excuse me, a point of order, please. As, as the mover, I believe I have the first dibs at speaking to it.
I, yes, okay, thank you. We'll go right to you, trustee Goldstein. I was going to, in case there was any confusion, that there's a hand, my hand is here, as I put myself on the speaker's list for the original motion. So I'm just going to leave it there, and, but I know what it is. And I will go to you as the mover, trustee Goldstein.
Thank you very much. So again, the purpose of the, of the amendment is so that this being a board initiative that the board feels comfortable in the control that the board has over the progress of the working group. Of course, it's not that the board doesn't trust staff. Of course we do. We wouldn't be asking you to do this work. But it's, it's a long process, and in any transaction, there's always a clear understanding of how work gets done. And that's how things get done. I would also remind the board that we have an agreement about public communication from a working group that in, it should indeed be, to some degree, carefully vetted by the board, or at least agreed to by the board before such public communication goes out. We haven't fleshed that out in great detail, but certainly along those lines. And this would be the time to do it during the approval of the terms of reference. And also the question about the role of staff on, on the working group. Would staff have, does the board want staff to have the authority to veto a vote of the working group? Or is staff obliged to go with the vote of the working group? These are questions which are sort of fuzzy in my head, and I'd like all these things to be cleared up before the working group sets off and does its really good work.
Thank you, trustee Goldstein. Trustee Sergeant?
Thank you very much. Well, the draft terms of reference are in the report. So I'm assuming when I approved the report, the recommendation that, and I had noted my thoughts earlier that, and staff has said that it will go back to the committee, and they'll have a discussion about it. And I think I shared my understanding of what the advisory committee would look like. And I don't believe advisory committee members will be voting and it's, it's an, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's an advisory committee to staff who are doing the work, who will bring that back. There's no voting motions, recommendations. It's a discussion, and I would assume it would work like the working group has. So I feel confident. I don't, I won't be supporting the recommendation because it is laid out here, and I have shared my, my thoughts.
Thank you, trustee Sergeant. Trustee Hamaguchi.
Thank you. I understand what trustee Goldstein is, is, you know, trying to do with this motion. But at this point, I am not supportive of it either. I think adding another layer of scrutiny to this process is not going to be helpful. I do have trust, and I'm sure we all do, in the people involved. And also too, this is very high-profile committee. And so I doubt that we're going to, we are going to be blindsided by anything that comes from it. And so, you know, at the risk of holding them back and getting to the work which needs to get done, I don't believe that, you know, everything has to be run by the board in order to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Hamaguchi. Trustee Lee, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Now, I have one question and one comment. My first question is, when I heard trustee Sergeant spoke on this matter as the first person who spoke, was she speaking to the amendment motion, or was she speaking to the main motion?
Speaking to the amendment.
Okay, my comment is, I am in disagreement with what I heard trustee Hamaguchi said. And how I disagree is this. It, the amendment motion is very much needed because it clarified it for me. Because without the amendment, had the motion been passed, I would forever have that question on my mind is, does it need to be approved by the board at some stage? And the other objection raised by trustee Hamaguchi was, well, the work needs to be done. We don't need to hold them back with another blah, blah, blah. Well, but the amendment motion already covered that because trustee Goldstein already said the work of the committee can go ahead without the approval. So that's how I see it. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Toblatney.
Yes. I have to say that I can't support this motion. I do not want to see this committee hamstrung by rules that trustees are putting in place. I think the terms of reference that have been laid out are, you know, quite reasonable. And if there are any other terms of reference that the committee wants to, you know, feels are important, they, they can certainly do that, send it back to the board. I really don't want to interfere with committee work. We haven't done the same for the SOGI committee. The SOGI committee had terms of reference, I believe, it's been a while, approved, you know, at the board table at the time. And, but we didn't put this kind of, we didn't put this kind of term on it. And I wouldn't want to do the same with this committee. SOGI committee has been working very efficiently, and I would expect this one would work the same. So I wouldn't want to hamstring a committee and, and not allow it to, yes, it could, it could start its work, but it wouldn't be able to continue its work until all this was approved. And that, you know, that could take a while. So I would rather see we move ahead with this now.
Thank you, trustee Toblatney. I will go back to trustee Goldstein as the mover of the amendment to have a final word. Would like to make a brief comment as well that, just to note that in the draft terms of reference, there would be trustee representation on the advisory committee. And I would, would be expecting that those representatives would be also representing what they are hearing from their colleagues around, around the terms of reference. I would also be expecting that the, the advisor group wouldn't significantly move, move significantly from the draft terms as they're part of this. Trustee Goldstein, final word on the amendment?
Thank you very much. As part of closing on this, I do have a question for staff about the previous working group, or the diversity working group that just completed the work. Was that an advisory group?
Sorry, could you repeat?
The group that just The group that just finished work, the diversity working group, was that an advisory group?
Through the chair, that was a working group. And typically, the difference is a working group has a finite task and a finite ending. Whereas an advisory committee is tends to be ongoing, has an ongoing role.
Would the role to staff be be the relationship with the staff members on the group be the same?
Through the chair, it would be similar, yes.
Okay. Then it was the staff who released the survey to the public.
trustee Goldstein, we're, I think we're getting beyond the scope of the amendment.
Okay, so to close up, I mean, you're right, that is a little outside the topic here, but it's relevant in the sense of really trying to understand what are the, what is the role of staff on the groups? I did understand that if the staff were facilitating and and so the survey went out, it wasn't up to staff really. But anyways, so that's that's my concern. So that's why I put in this amendment so that the board could be sure about how the group is operating and who is doing what on the group. I'll I'll close with that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And so all trustees have had a chance to have a comment on this. Trustee Deblotny, your hand is, this isn't a Oh, I'm sorry. Just checking. So I'm gonna call the question on the amendment, on the amendment by trustee Goldstein. All those in favor of the amendment? And those opposed? Okay, that amendment is defeated. And so we are back to the original motion on the floor. I did have my name on the list and I I what I had wanted to say was that this conversation and this report coming today was reminding me of something that one of the elders said to us on Thursday at the at the trustees association meeting this weekend. And he said, what what we need to do to move forward in a good way is to listen and then to make an agreement about what we're going to do and then to act. And it strikes me that this is, this is what we're doing. We have listened. We are in the process of making an agreement of what we're going to do and then we are going to do it. May not be perfect. We're going to make our way through together because we have agreed that we're going to do this work and we're going to do it together. So, you know, my final comments were that I agree with the idea of forming the the advisory committee and I fully support moving ahead on all the priority areas as my colleagues have have also said. Because this work, anti racist, anti oppression, anti colonial, taking this lens and applying it to everything we do as a district is is critical for us and in the end, critical for our students' well being and creating that environment for them where they can thrive. The mover, I'm trying to remember, the mover was trustee Deblotny. So if there are no other comments. The final, final word.
Wanted to, in closing, I recognize the committee work. You know, we had many long and interesting in-depth discussions. And they were all good discussions. The committee did quite a bit of work with putting things on the website, resources for teachers and and staff. And I really wanted to thank Assistant Superintendent Brodegum for her, her leadership on the committee. I think, you know, it was a, it was a tough task right from the get go and and she put a lot of thought and and diligence into the into leading us forward. So I think, you know, I think she's a difference maker. I will call her a difference maker and and the committee members are as well. So it was an honor to serve on that committee. It was was great work and got me reading a whole bunch. So, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Deblotny. Trustee Lee, just checking in, I had passed the mic to trustee Deblotny as the mover to have the the final word before our vote. Did you have a comment that you hadn't made yet about about the motion?
Yes, now that we are just about immediately going to vote on the main motion, I wish to say something. And what I wish to say is this, because the amendment had been voted down and therefore, although I'm in favor of the main motion as it is, the only thing that has me very concerned, it leaves it unclear whether through that entire process in the main motion from beginning to end, does it need to be approved by the board at some stage? And that being left unsaid, I'm afraid, although I'm supportive of the work that has done so far, I am supportive of what I think the main motion if passed will continue to do the good work by all the people involved. I am left with no choice but to vote against the main motion because of that and only that reason. Thank you.
Oh, trustee Lee, I'm just checking if it's a question that you feel you need answered before before you feel you can vote. Is your question whether or not the board has to approve the terms of reference? Is that your question?
No, whether it has to approved what this new committee will now begin to do at some point in the future and will continue to do in terms of all the actions, all the decisions, does it at one stage needs to be approved by the board?
Right. I can, I can give you my perspective on that. I can offer you my perspective on that. And it's, I think, reflective of the conversations we've we've had as a board. And that is that the work that, so there are lines of accountability that are part of the terms of reference, which means that the work of the advisory committee and of staff in these areas will be reported back to the board. And there's several different different ways through the reporting on the strategic plan, through the regular reporting through a standing committee structure and also an annual report to the board from the advisory committee, such a same same model we have with the SOGI advisory committee. I would imagine that in the work that is proposed to go forward, those pieces though, that are particularly the board's purview, the board's work such as policy, if there are policy recommendations that that are, you know, that the advisory group and staff are recommending policy, well, obviously, that will come to the board because it's the board who who does policy work. So those things that are within the scope of the board, those actual actions, the actual work, or if there are budget implications for a, you know, a position or or an initiative where the board is the one that approves the budget, that that those pieces that are the board's work will come to the board for approval. And those that can continue without, that are operational and aren't part of the actual governance work of the board will come for information and feedback from the board and the reporting. But not every, not every single action. Now, I'm just gonna test that assumption with others and maybe, but that's generally how how it's worked with the SOGI committee too. The board will, I mean, the staff bring to the board the work that is the boards and they report on the other work and and seek input and direction from the board when it's appropriate. Does that answer your question?
Well, I appreciate what Madam Chair just said. But if I may, it would be of great help to me if our superintendent, I assume he totally understood what you said, what the mover, the main motion said, and what trustee Goldstein and I said, if he could share his wisdom with me on this particular point, whether the amendment to say it needs to be approved by the board made it clear and without it, it is not clear or it is already clear in his mind.
So I'm just gonna check with our superintendent. I think what our super is able to comment on, I'm gonna check with with him, is whether or not he and staff are clear on what the board is proposing because that would be important. But the board ultimately has to decide whether or not this is the motion that they want. So I'll check with you, superintendent, as to whether or not it's it's clear to you in terms of helping staff move forward with the facilitation, that what's what's on the table today.
Yeah, Madam Chair, what's being proposed at this time is clear to staff, absolutely.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't catch what the superintendent said.
What is being proposed through the main motion is clear to me as the superintendent trustee Lee, and I believe sets a clear path forward that staff would be able to follow based on the process that Chairperson Nixon has described. So I would be comfortable as the superintendent with what's being proposed at this time, if that's what you're asking me.
No, I'm asking, without the words, the board has the approval, but the work can be be can can be done without the approval having come down or not. Why, without that, it would still be clear?
trustee Lee, what are you asking that the that needs to be clear that the board is approving? Are you talking about the terms of reference again? Or are you talking about every action that that the district might take in this work? What is it you're looking for clarity on a board? What do you think the board is needing to approve?
You see, any action that would have finality. It then, before it then goes into action, I, in my mind, needs to be approved by the board because there's not gonna be any more research, looking into it, discussion, but actual action, it's gonna actually perform.
Okay, thank you. I, well, as I said, we've shared and and our our staff have agreed that that our pers- speaking personally, perspective would be that those actions that are properly the work of the board, such as policy governance and and the approval, creation and approval of a policy would come to the board for approval, those things which are more operational in nature would be reported to the board. There may be some some input received. It's it's not a, it's not a black and white process. There's, it's a relational, it's a relationship that we have between us and our stakeholders. I'm speaking personally, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop. I'm just gonna see if trustees have another comment and we're gonna move to the question. Trustee Sergeant?
Well, what, one final, I guess, I was just gonna go right to call the question from the weekend, like. But I just want to note, you know, I hear concerns, but I I think it's very laid out, the accountability structure in the report and our staff's and board's accountability structure to the strat plan. I feel very confident with that. We will be able to ask all our questions and direct. And so I feel very confident and I would suggest that we call the question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So the motion to call the question isn't debatable. It needs, I believe, two thirds majority, just going to double check since we were just at a meeting, it's a bit pressure, but can we double check that, calling the question, is it a two thirds of the trustees? Favor?
I don't think anybody else had any other, any other comments. If you just call for the vote, now I think it'll go.
But I need to actually know, it's not just a simple majority for for vote for calling the question. So I, we do need to just
It wasn't making it official. I was just suggesting as colleagues, let's just call the question.
I think there's no more, my impression is
There's no more, there are no more comments that we don't need to vote on calling the question, which we also went through on the weekend. Okay. Okay, thank you. Then we are going to call the question on the motion. So all those in favor of the motion? Please indicate by raising your hand. And those opposed to the motion, please indicate. One, one opposed. So that motion carries. Thank you very much for your time, Ms. Brodegum, in bringing us this this report. Thank you to trustees for the for the discussion. It's very encouraging that we're going to move forward with this. I know you've already heard several times the thanks from the board, but we want to, everyone to know, the staff to know that we we are appreciative of the work, especially the members of the working group for giving so generously of their time, but energy for this work, bringing open hearts and minds to difficult work. And especially to those who participated in the surveys, in the focus groups for sharing your stories and your experiences and for for challenging us to to move forward in a good way. Thank you.
So, excuse me, Madam Chair, if I may, just a comment. I think it'd be appropriate if the minutes indicated the reason for trustee Lee's negative vote.
Oh, thank you. We will discuss the content of the minutes outside of this meeting. Thank you. I'm gonna check, we've been sitting at, we've all been sitting for quite a long time and I just want to to check to see if we needed quick communicate. We call it a communications break. Are we good? We're good? Okay. Okay, then we'll continue on. We're on to number seven, new business. And this is, we have one item and it's board advocacy. And so, as mentioned at the end of the budget discussion, this is on the agenda as an opportunity for trustees to do a bit a bit more of talking about possible avenues for advocacy, whether it be for funding or or otherwise. So, wondering who would like to like to start us off. We heard a couple of ideas already mentioned earlier. Trustee Sergeant, go ahead.
Thank you very much. I actually have a motion if I could get right to it because I think we've had
Please.
And Catherine, I'm sorry. I have it written down, but I move that the Richmond Board of Education write a letter to the Ministry of Education explaining the impact of the the impact to the Richmond Board of Education of the recent announcement of the five sick days. And further that the Richmond Board of Education meet with our MLAs to discuss the concerns for
Yes. Oh, wonderful. Right, we've got that. Although we may need to read it again for for seconding and discussions. And now that you don't have it in front of you, I won't ask you, ask you to read it. Okay, did trustees hear the motion? As I'm going to ask for a seconder for the motion. I'm looking again, we're not supposed to, trustee Goldstein, have your hand up as instructed. So are you seconding?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you. And so we'll open discussion. Yes, please.
Thank you very much. While this announcement happened very, very quickly and the impact to not only Richmond, actually all districts in the province, we're not clear on how big it is, but it could be huge. And I think it's imperative, it's an emergent situation. I do believe that we need to share the impact, you know, given the parameters this to this. And I think that any announcements that is made from the ministry like this needs to be fully funded. And so I do think we have to move quickly. Not saying it'll be successful. And the reason why I didn't request a meeting with the minister is because we already have that request in and waiting for that moment to happen. But I do think I should meet with our MLAs again. And if our MLAs are meeting with the minister now, I think they need to make sure that they have all the information they need. And I think that would come from us and from our superintendent, so N R S T. So I really do believe we we need to move quickly on this. And perhaps there's, I'm not suggesting that paid five, six days is not good. It's probably really good for our employees, given the pandemic we just came through and how that was highlighted, but it needs to be funded. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, trustee Deblotny.
Yes, I, well, I agree with the motion, just if we're meeting with our MLAs, I think we'd also have some other things to discuss as well. I'd like to see more on the agenda. And but, you know, I I agree that this, this is probably a priority, so I will support the motion.
Thank you, trustee Deblotny. I have, I see other hands. Just want to check with trustee Sergeant whether your, the second part of your motion about meeting with MLAs was also meant to be one topic or whether you would entertain that being broader or for the board to discuss what what we might bring entertain that being broader or for the board to discuss what what we might bring for MLAs.
The motion is to talk about the topic.
Okay.
Make sure that they hear and when they go back, they know exactly what they're talking about. But of course, if we get an hour or two, of course, we're going to talk about other things. But it was to make sure that the impact is understood by all who are advocating. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Lee?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am afraid, I am, I'm going to ask for that motion to be read again because I tried to catch which trustee was making a motion, but I couldn't figure it out because whoever it is had his head so her head down. So I'm afraid I didn't get the motion itself.
Sure, we can read it again. And it was moved by trustee Sargent. Will, will someone at a microphone have have it? Oh.
This Catherine.
Okay, trustee Sargent's going to read it because she is by the microphone.
Thank you. That I move that the Richmond Board of Education write a letter to the Minister of Education explaining the impact to the Richmond Board of Education of the recent announcements of the five sick days. And further, the Richmond Board of Education meet with MLAs to discuss concerns further.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Any questions, trustee Lee? Nope. Okay. Trustee Hamaguchi, you're next.
Hi, I support this motion. And after listening to all the speakers tonight, I think there is a sense of urgency. Although I'll be fair frank, the I think it's important that we advocate to show that we've, you know, that we are out there and and we have a message to bring. But at the same time, too, I have a hard time believing the provincial government doesn't know isn't aware of the impact of their funding decisions and so forth. Just my opinion. But as I said, I guess time will tell. But, you know, we do need to go through the steps and meeting with our MLAs, writing letters. They're all necessary. And, you know, once again, as trustee Sargent said, how far it'll get us, I don't know. But if you don't try, you'll never know at all. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments? Perhaps I will just add that I I would support the motion as long as I think I'm hearing there's openness if we do get a meeting when when, not if, when we have a meeting with our MLAs that we that we can possibly add in some other, I'm thinking of a lot of things we could be talking just in terms of the operating, the operating grant, including what we heard about the impact of the serious impact of inflation not being not being funded. Step costs and contracts for staff, support for mental health, which we have advocated and and brought up with our MLAs before. And as well as support for the development of options for the new indigenous graduation requirement and continuing to to work on embedding indigenous lens in our in our classrooms and in our curriculum. So there would be some other things I would like to bring up. And that's, that's just touching on operating, let alone some other things we could be talking about. So and I'm seeing nods like that. Yeah, of course. Yeah, thanks. And so I'd be I'd be supporting the motion. Any other comments? Trustee Goldstein. Oh, thank you. I see your hand.
Yeah, thank you very much. My comment.
My comment is related to your comment, Madam Chair. I think it's very important that we do keep that in mind. I mean, MLAs, we probably have limited access to MLAs. It's hard to to form meetings. And if, and so, yeah, so I think we should, we do this meeting. I don't, I'm not suggesting an amendment to the motion, but keep in mind that we should have a good list of things to talk about. Of course, be sure to have this one on there as well. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Well, if we're ready, I'll call the question then. All those in favor of the motion? Please indicate. And that is unanimously carried. Thank you. Thank you very much. Any further discussion on advocacy? Trustee Goldstein?
Question about advocacy. I know education is a provincial matter, but some funding does come federally. I haven't heard much advocating federally. Is that something worth looking at? In terms of for for our budget stuff?
There are some things that we have met with our MPs about. And I know that our MPs have indicated willingness to to meet with the board. There are a couple of things. I'm thinking of Swiss worker funding, French, especially as funding for French programs as well. So yeah, there could be could be, it's probably time as well to to get in touch with them. So take that under advisement. Thank you, trustee Blotney.
Yeah, I I would have to agree with trustee Goldstein. I think it is time to meet with our MPs. You know, we have, we have new MPs and it and it's been quite a while since we met with 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 our representatives. And and there are some things I think that we could probably compile a list now. So I can think of a few. So, yeah, I think it's important to do that, too.
Okay, great. Thank you. So moving on, so second question period, today, questions from attendees tonight. I think maybe the evening is getting long. But I will check to see if there are any questions. I don't see any online. Okay, thank you. So moving to standing committee reports, audit committee, trustee Goldstein.
Yep, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our next meeting will be held on Monday, May ninth, two thousand, well, this year, Monday, May ninth, and it'll be by Zoom. We are not meeting in person. It'll be by Zoom.
Okay.
And also, just to let the people know, this is an in camera committee, so it's not something the public are invited to.
Thank you. Education Committee, trustee Larson.
Yes, thank you. Meeting was held on April twentieth and the next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, May the eighteenth at 6:00 PM per public. And I look forward to seeing everybody there.
Thank you. Facilities and Building Committee, trustee Hamaguchi. I'm, where to look? You're over here.
Thank you. The meeting was held on April the sixth. The next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, May fourth at 4:30 PM and it will also be online as well. Thanks very much.
Okay, thank you. Inets and Legal Committee, trustee Sargent.
Thank you very much. There is a recommendation in your package, which I'll read. Whereas the Board of Education of School District Thirty Eight Richmond is paying for expenses incurred by the trustees in the discharge of their duties. Be it resolved that in accordance with the School Act, the Board of Education of Richmond of School District Thirty Eight Richmond approves trustees' expenses paid during the three month period period ended March thirty first, twenty twenty two in the amount of four thousand eight hundred and seventy seven dollars and twenty cents.
Thank you. Is there a seconder? Trustee Larson, thank you. Any discussion? All the question, those in favor? Any opposed that is carried? Thank
Our next meeting is May eighteenth at ten. Thank you.
Thank you. Policy Committee, trustee Blotney.
Yes. As mentioned, I think policy actually will have a lot of work moving forward due to the recommendation being approved tonight. So our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, May sixteenth at eleven AM. And I am, I still have to to survey the committee and and the committee members to see if they want to meet by Zoom or in person. So I will, I will do that.
Thank you. Under Board Committee and Representative Reports, Council Board Liaison Committee meeting was held on April thirteenth. And the next meeting date is to be determined. We are at the end of our agenda. Motion to adjourn. Trustee Larson, thank you. And to seconder, trustee Blotney, thank you. We're all in favor, hopefully. Great, thank you. We are adjourned. And thanks to everyone for being with us this evening, our discussions. Have a safe home, those of you who have come in person. Take care, everyone.
And now we're going back to in camera?
Yes, trustees will be logging off and logging on to another meeting.
On your calendar. Yeah, but I don't know why it's marking up.